All right, let's go. Si, buenas tardes. I lost myself. Okay. Let's see if that works. Yep, it looks like it works. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are now starting the open meeting. We did not have closed session tonight. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they will place it in order when they are turned in. We also call speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one and the one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if by accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speaker is permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Tonight, we are doing two minutes for the first hour, and then if we need to extend, it'd be one minute after that. Again, tonight, we're doing two minutes for the first hour, two-minute public comments, and then if we need to extend the public comment, it'd be one minute per speaker. Now, let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Staff, do we have the video of the land acknowledgement?
Of course. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chachanio, Muekma, Karkan, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. We're now moved to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge that the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today, of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary traffic, force, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. I will now read our school board anti-racism statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in the direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we will recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for the growth and learning, to deepen our understanding of our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into the larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit into supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding the West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, may we please have the roll call?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds?
Good evening, everyone. Here.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips? Is absent at the moment. Trustee Christian?
Yes, good evening, President.
Student trustee Pakar?
Good evening, President.
And student trustee Abdou Kaparov is absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We are now moving to item B8, which is WCCUSD public comment. I'm going to read it again. How to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form or participating via Zoom, they need to raise their hand. Again, we are going to do two minutes public comments for the first hour, and then if we extend, we will extend to one minute for public comment. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in the public. Uh, staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, our first public comment is Alon Harrison.
Good evening, board. I wasn't ready to go first, so, but good to see y'all this evening. Um, a couple of things I was concerned about. We had a couple of meetings last week, and one of the things that I heard in the meeting was that the LCAP, our recommendations, we were concerned if they were going to be able to get to you all in time enough when you guys are making budget decisions. Um, I will be talking about this also in our report, but we do want to make sure you all respect all the parent groups' requests and advisory coming from LCAP when you guys are making budget decisions because we're working really hard to put our input around programs and services that we want to see for our children and that we feel teachers could benefit from. So please take time before you make decisions around the budget to look at the LCAP recommendations coming from parents. Also, we want to talk about the past budget and how that will be distributed next school year regarding our students and how they identify in the California dashboard and how our children are in red in attendance and suspensions, and what services and resources are you guys going to ensure that you sustain for our children? We want our SCOW. A SCOW can definitely support attendance and suspensions, so removing our SCOW will not be a good idea for our, and it won't happen in peace. And so I, we really need our SCOW, and we really need our other Black educators. So if you guys can manage to utilize our budget to retain our Black educators and our Black support systems and services and programs that have data of showing that they're helping our children. Some things aren't helping our children, so we don't mind removing those things, but the things that are working, we would like to sustain those things. Thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Sandeep Suraj Bonsi. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, board members. My name's Sandeep Suraj Bonsi, and I'm a Vista High School parent. I'm here for the fourth time in a row. You're probably sorry to hear my voice again, but as a concerned parent and a community member, the first time I spoke, I stressed how this school was a game changer when I found it after the pandemic. What I didn't talk about is how I came to know about this school. I found this school through a small advertisement, my homeschool in Hercules made. I wasn't comfortable with sending my kids back to in-person at the time, and this was my godsend. I and many others jumped at the chance to get in, and I was one of the lucky ones to secure a spot for my three children. There was an overwhelming response from the community as a whole, and it was so large that Ms. McCormick, our principal, had to rush to onboard new staff to keep up with the demand. Since then, I'm hearing that there's a high demand for this school and a continued waiting list, but the staffing around it is not meeting what could potentially be one of the top virtual schools in the country if you allow it to flourish. If losing more and more teachers at Vista becomes a trend, which it sounds like it has been because it's the second time in a row we're in this position of being reduced, our school will no longer be a school, and it will only dwindle away. I'm here today to not allow this to become a pattern. Budget cuts should be taken away from luxuries the district may have, not from the teachers that uphold its foundation. Instead, the district should be looking for ways to highlight this school, the virtual school around the state. Yes, I said around the state. And I can definitively say, if you advertise it around the state, you'll bring more demand to the school and more funds to this district. I hope the board makes the right decision and keeps these teacher on staff and keep Vista Virtual thriving and a vital option for our community. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Magali Ramirez.
Hi, good evening. I'm Magali, and I have a student at Highland Elementary School. She is currently five years old, and she started school this year in August. And ever since she's been in school, she's been getting very sick. I don't know what's going on in the school, but now she's developed asthma. She's on an inhaler every four hours, on two different inhalers, on Flovan and Albuterol. And every week, she's missing school because she's sick. I know there's something going on in school because I've noticed that the principal and some teachers have been missing a lot. Even when I go into a school, I notice a smell, a harsh smell, that I don't know what it is, mildew, mold, or something like that, something off. And my chest does start hurting every time I pick her up because she's sick. Um, I'm currently having to take her to the doctors every week. She's only going to school two to three days a week because of her being sick all the time. I have two other kids that are not sick, so I know it's not a viral infection because she's the only one being affected by this. The teacher had to move from one classroom to another classroom, and I thought it would get better, but it's just been getting worse. She's been having rashes. She doesn't eat. She throws up constantly. She has these phlegms all the time, and that's not her. She's a big girl, and she has a good immune system. I'm just concerned that other kids will get sick or she will get worse. And she, I took her to the doctor today as well, and her lungs are inflamed. I don't have no explanation of why. There's nothing going on in my house, and the only explanation I have is that every time she goes back to school, she gets sick. The day she's off of school, she's swine. She's eating well, she's running, and I just don't know what to do. It's very stressful for me because I'm seeing my daughter being sick every week, and I don't know what to do, what's causing this. I just wanted you guys to hear me out.
Our next public comment is Gania Cervantes. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Ben Mims, and I'm in fifth grade. I have been a student at Vista Virtual since third grade. This school has really helped me feel safe. I've not been bullied. I get to work at my own pace. I don't get bored. Everyone is super kind, and I just found out that not one, but two of my teachers have been cut for next year. The Mahis are high school teachers, but they're also my music teachers, and I don't understand why you would remove really good teachers who care about their students. I think there has to be another way to deal with budget cuts that doesn't include taking teachers from students. This is a school, right? So what are we doing if we don't have qualified teachers? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jasaria Youngston.
I am Jasaria, speaking on behalf of a school full of students that are tired, tired of a lot, but specifically tired of losing teachers and staff who truly care, teachers and staff who see us as people, not simply data that determines how much money goes to our school. First stigma that the vast majority of our communities know all too well, or kids who are simply disposable, disposable at your use and your verdict. Today, I'm speaking for Coach Dame. One of many links in our chain of support systems that we will not allow you to cut, move, or make vacant. Coach Dame, a vital male role model to many. Coach Dame, a topic of discussion we won't allow you to pacify. We will not remain silent because we don't play about ours. We will speak our truth with boldness, and we will stand, and we will stand on it because we were not given a spirit of fear. We will speak our truth because we won't allow our system that is for us to fail us again, a system that smiles in our face and gives us hopes and promises knowing to have the power to destroy us. A school district whose strategic goals are student achievement, accountability for all inequity, whose goal is to build and implement accountability that nurtures a culture that holds everyone accountable, every, members, district employees, families, students, and teachers accountable for student success, our success. According to Deansa High School's most updated school accountability report card, we have a 63.8% of socio-economically disadvantaged students, students who can't afford vacancy, more specifically his vacancy. We will hold you accountable, and you will hear us. We will disrupt and agitate until you choose to no longer ignore us. How do we fight for those who care about us? This is how we fight, and his fight won't be the end until his check comes in the mail that he is with us. Coach Dame stays. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rose C. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. My name is Rose. I have a daughter attending Vista High School under Ms. Mel Mahi. I don't understand why the teaching positions at Vista Virtual High School are being taken away from these three amazing teachers who do everything for their students. Homeschooling programs are very in demand due to the ways it has helped many kids learn every day. It helps students with academic problems and especially students with mental health problems. The last thing any of these students need is for them to lose their teachers. It is to lose their safe space. Vista Virtual Academy even has a waiting list of kids who are trying to enroll into the school. Vista High actually needs to gain more teachers instead of losing them because of the amount of students that are in need of a program like this. Cutting teachers also means that the students that are on the waiting list will be impacted and may not be accepted to the school as quickly as they need to be. Less teachers means a smaller school. The amount of students on the waiting list will get accepted slower. The three teachers that are at risk of losing their teaching positions don't even live in the Bay Area. They live hundreds of miles away. It's not worth it for them to move in the area when there's other virtual school. Vista High School would just lose three great teachers who are proven to be the best at what they do. Homeschooling is a safe place, a place for many students at Vista High. Ms. Mel Mahi, these three teachers, they are irreplaceable. They gave their student that safe place. Please find other ways. This program is proven to be successful. Instead, let's help more kids find their right path with Vista High School. Thank you, everyone.
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown.
I'd like to say good afternoon, board. Rodney Alamo Brown, community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. I think we should give the young lady another round of applause for that wonderful commentary that she gave. Long sigh. You know, there's an old saying, when ours replaced with we, even illness becomes wellness. Most of you may know who I am, but today I'm going to introduce, reintroduce myself to you. I've what? I've been stricken with the deadly disease called HIV. And I'm not talking about the sexually transmitted disease. I'm talking about the hood-infected virus. And if you don't get an antidote for HIV, it turns into AIDS, Addictive Incarceration Death Syndrome. What we're trying to do is prevent those things from happening to these young people. Removing Mr. Damon and Mr. Tyree off the campus is what we call communal suicide. Please listen to me. They sent over 100 children from our community to colleges and universities of higher learning. I don't know anybody within the sector of our city that's done anything as wonderful as that. To remove them from the campus will be the most deadliest decision you all have ever made. Now, today, a young man asked me, he said, hey, man, what are you mixed with? You look like you, you know, you're from a Caribbean country or something. And I told him, I'm mixed with disruptive mood dysregulation disorder, persistent depressive disorder, post-traumatic stress disorder, and activity hyperactive disorder. What does that mean? I'm a walking time bomb. So are these children in back of me. Imagine Deansa High School without these gentlemen on campus. Your attendance will be low. You already think the state score records are very, very low, as she mentioned earlier? All these things will be in concert of disruptiveness. Now, I know Mr. Folds, Mr. Dmitri, and Ms. Folds came up to the school the other day to meet with the children, but did you ever tell them that you will make sure that this situation?
Our next public comment is Jessica Sissil. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. Thank you for the parents and students that are attending tonight. I am one of the teachers being cut from Vista Virtual program, and I've spoken in the past, but tonight I'm going to read a letter from a parent who cannot attend this evening. So, "To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my concern and disappointment that such an important education format could be downsized when, if anything, it should be expanded to hire more teachers and help more students. Smart children who don't fit the mold are getting lost in the current standard school system. They're growing up thinking they're not intelligent just because they don't have the time to work at their own pace. We need more programs like Vista. We need more teachers like Vista teachers. Many types of kids thrive in these programs, and for some, they really need these programs to be able to graduate. I currently have one daughter in the Vista High School program who simply learns better independently and gets better grades in this education format, but her older sister attended Vista under much more complex circumstances. My eldest daughter has a chronic illness that makes her almost sleep bedbound. The onset of this illness occurred suddenly halfway through her high school career, and she was completely failed by the standard school system. She basically had no choice but to drop out because there were no alternative ways for her to obtain credit if she could not attend in person. These are very few supports in place for students like this, and most schools are completely unaware of the home hospital program. In my daughter's case, even that, once we found it, wasn't a good match for her fragile condition. The only reason she was able to graduate from high school was because of Vista's independent study program that allowed her to work little by little at her own pace. After the pandemic, there were more and more children with complex illnesses and other needs that were perhaps not so visible in the past. I feel that it would be a huge disservice to the community to downsize the program when the need for it is so great. In organizing your budget, please reconsider the importance and value of providing quality alternative education options to the children of the West Contra Costa community and employing teachers who can facilitate that for them. Thank you, Holly Kamara."
Our next public comment is Erin Callantine.
Hello. Thank you very much. I don't, I haven't spoken in front of this board in about five years, but I am a Vista teacher. I'm, in fact, the most senior independent studies teacher in this district. I have been at our school longer than our principal and longer than any of the other teachers. I am here to tell you as a board that when you cut this program, you are cutting students away from our district. We have a waiting list. We could provide the services that we provide, and I know you've heard from parents and students about them, so I will not hammer that home, but we provide this to a very small number of students now. If you doubled our staff, then I believe truly that we could provide this level of education, and it is a marvelous education to twice as many students easily. We always start the year less full than we end the year because we are a school that helps people who are going through crisis. Sometimes it is traumatic illness, and sometimes it is traumatic family events, and sometimes it is honestly wonderful things. We have had touring sports stars. We have had touring artists. We had a Univision winner who got to go on tour and graduate high school. It's not, if you cut our teachers, you will make this program smaller, you will lose students, and who you will actually be hurting are the students who are our best and brightest, who need something that they cannot get at the regular schools. I was a, I was a teacher at Kennedy for eight years before I came to Vista. Kennedy burned me out before the staffing shortages that are happening now. Making our school smaller will lessen this district, and you will lose this amazing crop of young children who are going to be independent study students until they graduate. They will be that with us, or they will be that somewhere else, but I would much rather keep our students and our amazing potential and our amazing parents here. We have the most dedicated and the most active school.
Our next public comment is Kate Shane. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Good evening, board members and superintendent first. My name is Kate Shane, and I'm a parent to a second and a fifth grader at Fairmont Elementary School. Our SSC has informed us that our site budget is set to be reduced by 66% next year due to LCFF site funds being reduced and our Title I funds being taken away despite our free and reduced-priced meal count not decreasing by a significant amount, 0.1%. Fairmont is an extremely diverse school with 30% English learners who speak over 30 languages, 20% S-FED students, and 45% FRPM. Our amazing teaching and support staff are led by only one site administrator, our principal Heather Best. Our Title I funds are crucial in allowing our staff to provide additional support for our most struggling students, landing us in the top 10 highest I-ready growth rates for multiple subjects and categories. I am here to ask you that you reinstate our I am here to ask you that you reinstate our Title I funds so that our staff can continue to help this diverse community achieve a safe and enriching environment. Flip-flopping Title I status from year to year will have a drastic negative impact on our student achievement and student safety. Thank you for your time this evening.
Our next public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. Today is May Day, International Workers' Day. Today commemorates the advancement of workers to basically worldwide make it known that our rights need to be focused on, and we need to have a unity together to make sure that our workplace is safe moving forward. We are still continuing to fight that fight, obviously, because we're all still here, and we still have to work through contracts across the whole entire world to make sure everybody goes forward. Um, so that is what today is in celebration for union leaders and union workers for the most part. I also wanted to note that I noticed that Friday is going to be May third. The nutrition lunch workers, people that have made it so that our students can continue to eat every day. I do know that they also make sure that there's a basket for giving. If somebody doesn't have enough to eat, they can come and grab something to snack on. And I just wanted to put a big shout out to all of our nutrition workers out there. Thank you. Thank you for making sure through everything we have gone through in the last five years that we are continuing to feed students. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Abria. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I just want to say that imagine how you would feel if you were in their shoes, being a teacher, perfecting your craft, you finally think that you found the right place to be chill and, you know, perfect your craft, help the students, and then they just throw you away like you're trash, like you're nothing. Just because you guys are going through issues, you guys have decided, well, we're gonna throw you aside, and we're just gonna do it because we're selfish and all we care about is money. I'd be pissed off too. And it's honestly really, really, really like just not okay that you guys are doing this because it's really disrespectful. Not only to them, but to us too, as the students, because you guys are openly admitting that you don't care about any, anyone but money. And we already knew that, but you need to keep that to yourself because it's embarrassing. It's really embarrassing because it's gonna ruin you guys' reputation too. Because clearly we know that you guys don't care about the students, but then you guys are trying to take away the only people that do, which isn't right. And it's not okay. And instead of worrying about the teachers, you need to worry about the nasty school food that you guys are providing for people in-person school, in-school, in regular school. It's not making sense. Why are we getting this nasty food? This is why students are eating now. That's what you guys need to be focusing on, instead of trying to fire the teachers that are the only ones helping us, because you guys don't care about us. We already know that. So you need to work, you need to worry on that. That's it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Cheyenne W.
From, from the zip codes nine four eight oh six, nine four eight oh one, and nine four eight oh three. Coach Dame is really a role model and an inspiration to the youth at Deansa High School. He's helpful all around and such a great person towards us teenagers. He has a great, he has a grace, he's a great support system, and he's very appreciated by us students at Deansa High School. We need way more like him, and we would hate to see him go if he does. Keeping valuable staff who cares about the integrity of the school and the well-being of the students is the backbone of any organization. Parents have noticed the dedication of the students, the dedication of the student system statewide, and we will not allow that to happen to Deansa without a fight. Keep quality staff, teachers, and coaches at our school. The WCC USD has a habit of making cuts that directly affect African-American students. Deansa wouldn't be what it is without Dame. The young men need him, his guidance and leadership. He is a part of the reason the success rate at Deansa has increased. My son is an lim- is an, an limni. So you, I leave you with this. Why meet with us with no change? Why act like you're showing us how to play a game you have an upper hand in? Why congrat- why congratulate us knowing you have all the power to overturn this destructive decision? You are all too, you are all too naive to understand the impacts of. He's not just the man, he's our community. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Anna Seals. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Simo. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment, Ana Rueda. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Um, my name is Ana Rueda. I have a student who is new to Vista. Um, the reason my son is at Vista is because being in person has not benefited him. He has been a student who has struggled all year long. He's had a lot of bullying. He has also special needs. The teachers at his previous school did not understand his needs, did not understand what he was needing, and did not communicate well with where he was at, where he's not at. And my son started falling behind. He was looking like a lost cause. Now, thankfully that he is at Vista, participating. His whole social anxiety of worrying about what is going on, what others are doing, trying to get, um, getting new and worsening behaviors that only attention was driven to at his previous school are all starting to shut down. And it's a very small time that we've been here, but my son is coming back to being who he is. Cutting out the teachers, giving other teachers more students, giving teachers, um, mixing them up in levels that they may probably not be able to, um, to educate all of our students, it's going to be hurting to all of the students, especially with a student like mine has special needs. Please consider not cutting from them.
Our next public comment is Lucas Manenix.
Hello. Good evening, board. Um, Dr. Hurst, appreciate your, your time tonight. So my name is Lucas Manenix. I am, uh, the proud father of a kindergartner and second grader at Fairmont Elementary. And I'm here to speak to you today about the fact that our site budget this year is actually being cut by sixty-six percent. I am the chair of our school site council, as well as the chair of our DL CAPS council. And so I have been very closely looking at how these budgets that we, that we give our sites um, actually affect our student achievement. And I can say from my experience, the site budgets have the most direct impact on our students' achievement. So for example, at Fairmont Elementary, this has really allowed us to give our teachers the extra intervention hours that they need to be able to work with those struggling students. And that's resulted in us having some of the highest growth rates in I-ready this year. And that's directly impacted by the Title I funds. So last year, we were given, we were, the Title I funds were granted to us last year, but this year they decided to be taken away, even though our free and reduced price, uh, meal percentage has virtually not changed from last year to this year. So my ask for you, to you tonight is to, uh, work with the district to look at the budget and reassess how those Title I funds are distributed so that we're not constantly every year flip-flopping and yo-yoing between having these funds and not having these funds. Another example of how these funds are used is for our student safety. It allows us to hire more site supervisors so that our children can play safely on the playground. I can tell you from experience, the year before, when we did not have our Title I funds, our field was closed the entire ye- year because there's not enough site supervisors to allow our kids to have a very safe place to run and play. And so those are the kind of direct tangible impacts that we see at our site between when we have the funds and when we don't have the funds. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Jen. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jen Douglas. I am the mother of a kindergartner at Fairmont as well. Um, and an eventual, you know, going to be another kid at Fairmont soon. Uh, also wanted to talk about the sixty-six percent cut, um, in site funding that we're going to experience, uh, mostly through the loss of the Title I funds. Uh, would like this to be reevaluated, um, because as Lucas, um, and other parents have mentioned, we only had a point one percent change, uh, in our free and reduced price lunch, uh, population. We do have a population that benefits wildly from these, this extra funding, um, including, you know, our high levels of, um, sped students, uh, as well as English language learners. And so it's incredibly impactful in our classrooms in terms of learning in the classroom. Um, but also, you know, the, the associations, because these are young kids, you know, coming in, you know, kindergarten through sixth. So we're establishing their relationship with school in general at this age. And so when kids go to a school where, for instance, if, when this funding gets cut and we lose the ability to have full access to the yard, to the field, um, and we have increased, you know, injuries, increased, um, kid confrontations that aren't managed, you know, we don't have enough staff and, and parent volunteers to manage these things, then our kids start to have this negative association with school. Then we have increased, um, you know, symptoms of anxiety and depression in our kids. Then kids start to associate school with a more dangerous place as opposed to a positive place of learning. And so we love to see the scores. We love to see the improved, um, reading outcomes. Uh, but what matters to me most as, you know, the mother of a young child, mother of young children, is to make sure that school is associated from the get-go as a safe place for our kids to learn. And that's what these funds allow Fairmont to do. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next public comment is Hadassah Dammelo.
Hello. My name is Hadassah Dammelo, and I am a student at Deansa High School in the eleventh grade. We're here to present, represent our petition for the role of the Student Support Service Supervisor, Coach Dame. We have all experienced the support and guidance of Coach Dame. We are deeply concerned about the potential remover of one of our only African-American trusted adults at Deansa High School in WCC. Coach Dame was always there for us, checking on our mental health, our grades, and overall well-being. He did not limit his care to the students. He reached out to every student regardless of their color or race. Coach Dame is more than just an adult figure in our school. He is a leader of support and trust for all students. According to data from NCES, students perform better academically and socially when they have a role model who share their racial or ethnic background. The district's decision threatens this diversity and could potentially impact the academic performance and emotional well-being of many students at Deansa High School. We must ensure that the decision made by WCC prioritizes not only educational excellence, but also inclusive, inclusivity, diversity, and mental health support. We urge you, re-urge you, to reconsider this decision. Keep Coach Dame as the Student Super- Super- Support Service Supervisor at Deansa High School, where he can continue his invaluable work with hundreds of students at Deansa. We would like you to know, we would like to know, what and when will this happen? You guys did come by our school, but we never got a full response. We would like one urgently. We will not take no as an answer. Also, an under, also, we have successfully got seven hundred and fifty-five signatures. We also have a copy if you guys would like it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rainese Robinson. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Daisy. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment, Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I have two quick things. One, I noticed we're having our vision testing tomorrow. We have like twenty-eight days or less of school. Why are we having our vision testing tomorrow? Why can't we have it in the beginning of the year? Teachers are less likely to notice a vision problem and more likely to notice a hearing problem. Can we please flip-flop the hearing assessment versus the vision assessment? Now I'm gonna have to commute a hundred miles round trip, I do it every day, to try to come out and support my families to go to the Lions Club or someone else, somewhere else, to try to afford and get glasses because it's done at the end of the year. And my kids aren't gonna have the opportunity to have vision testing again for two years. It really, really, really needs to be in the beginning of the year. Please, please, please. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, yes, I only know the alphabet soup. EGIS program, I don't understand why we're using this. They test the students for their sounds on uppercase letters. The majority of the sounds we read and write are lowercase letters. They do not test on letters that they got correct in previous tests, like in the fall or the spring. I don't, or in the winter. I don't understand why. My kids can know it one time and not know it the rest of the year. Are we doing due diligence in our service by assuming because they got it right once, they, they know what it is? That makes no sense to me. Are we using our money correctly with something like this? I don't know. As a teacher, I'm very frustrated having to use this program because like I said, I have to go and hand-change it because I have kids that know a letter one time and they don't know it another time. And it's just kind of crazy, and it takes a lot of my time, a lot of my effort. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Sarah Manenix.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sarah, and I am a parent of two kids at Fairmont Elementary. And I am also here to talk about our, um, site budget being reduced by sixty-six percent for next year. This is in part due to our, a reduction in our LCFF funds and also in large part because, um, we're losing our Title I funding despite our, um, free and reduced price meal count reducing by, from forty-five point three percent to just forty-five point two percent. Um, these budget, the budget cut should not come from our students. This shouldn't be taken directly from our students. The Title I funds are crucial for our school in particular. Um, Fairmont is a very diverse school with seventy-nine percent minority student enrollment, thirty percent English language learners with over thirty languages spoken. We have twenty percent, um, special ed students with over a hundred IEPs managed by just one site administrator. And our Title I funds are used for both academic supports and interventions for our students who need it the most. Um, it provides counseling support for our students as well as site supervisors to keep our site safe for our students, um, materials and supplies, um, basic necessities for our students' safety and learning. Um, just, uh, it, think, speaking from a parent at the school prior to the Title I funds, um, when we didn't have our Title I funds, our lunch program was entirely run on parent volunteers. If we didn't have parents show up to our lunch program, we didn't have anyone supervising the kids while they ate lunch. Um, that is a huge drastic difference to what has happened this year with our Title I funds. Um, in fact, with our Title I, we, we're now in the fourth highest growth rate for, um, on multiple subjects for the I-ready test. Um, so I'm here just simply to ask that we reinstate the Title I funds for Fairmont Elementary um, so that we can have, continue to support our students in their safe learning. Thank you. so that we can have, continue to support our students in their safe learning. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Samantha Castaneda.
Hi, yes, I'm a mother that has her son going to Highland Elementary School. And recently I've noticed my son having an increase on some respiratory issues and kind of struggling with his eyes. And I haven't noticed it until he started going back to school and recently his school switched his classroom and gave us no reasoning why. And I'm just wanting to know some answers of why are they, why they never told us the results of why they're switching him into a new room? And he's still having these issues and hearing from another mother that I'm having this, that we're having the same issues is really frustrating because now our kids' health is on the line and we don't wanna be struggling seeing our kids this way. So for us, you know, we just wanna know answers and make sure that our kids are being heard and that, that we're being heard and that something's being done. And we just wanna make sure that we get these results from K one room and what happened and is there mold? Is there anything going on that we need to be aware of? That's it. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Joyce Pinero.
Hello, good evening. My name is Joyce Pinero. I'm the mother of Hadassah D'Amello, incredible, talented, and smart young woman. They attend to Deans High School. We need you to really rethink this decision. This is going to ruin the climate of the coach that Dame caters for hundreds of kids and will have a huge impact on, on the climate of Deans. His position's being removed. We will have an impact and that never had before. Y'all been this age and we know how important it is for, to have someone to, as a role model, someone that checks on you, that makes sure everything is good and he's that person. So I please rethink about this. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Grace Wong. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. Uh, dear esteemed board members and superintendent, I want to echo some of the things that other parents at Vista Virtual Academy said today. I want to ask that you reconsider letting go of the high school teachers. If anything, I agree with the other parents that we should be expanding the program, the value, that it's an invaluable educational program. In this digital age where independent study isn't just a vision for the future, but a reality today, the importance of our educators cannot be overstated. Technology evolves at an unprecedented pace, demanding that our students not only keep up, but excel as lifelong learners. It's a skill set that needs to be taught and honed in. I just wanna share some anecdotes from the second grade class alone. I have observed that at least twenty percent of the children are read, in second grade are reading at fourth grade level with one mastering third grade math and doing algebra. And those that I notice are, that start at below level have made extraordinary progress, completed over a year's worth of reading growth in just six months. And this is not coincidence or luck. I think the program is very effective. It's a, it's also a testament to the dedication and skill of the teaching staff. The potential loss of three high school teachers, from my understanding, can, uh, can unravel the success story. The repercussions, I, my understanding, will not be limited to just the high school students. It could have downstream impact across all grades, which would be a really unfortunate. I'm sure there are countless, countless success stories waiting to be told. With more outreach and support, I really firmly believe that the program has the potential to attract parents, not just within our district, but from neighboring districts as well. There's so many parents I've spoken to, they have no idea. They wanna learn more. Let's keep the program as it is. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Nisa Bremer.
Hi, Board. I've talked to you all on Zoom many times. This is my first time here in person, so it's nice to see you all. Hello? Um, I'm also a parent at Fairmont Elementary and I'm here to speak to you tonight because as you've heard, we've been notified that we're losing our Title I funding and we're going to be having a budget reduction for our site funds of sixty-six percent in one year. Honestly, to be honest with you guys, sixty-six percent feels really shocking, considering I continue to hear you as a board recommend that budget cuts come not at the expense of students. Site funds, LCFF, Title I funds, these go into the students every day. These are our site supervisors, these are our interventions, our after-school clubs. They're the ways that we keep our kids safe and that we continue to educate them at the level that we need to and as you request for our teachers to do. Between twenty-twenty-three and this year, our free and reduced lunch percentage went down point one percent. So we are losing our Title I funding over point one percent. Point one percent does not change the needs of our students at Fairmont. We are incredibly diverse. There's thirty languages spoken in our community. Thirty percent of our children are English learners. We have twenty percent of our, our students in the special education program. Um, and our, our population is over five hundred and we have one administrator to manage all of them. Um, I'm here with many other parents from my school, as you've heard from tonight, to ask you to please reinstate our funds, reevaluate, uh, look into the budget, um, and please reinstate these funds. They're incredibly important. This money goes directly to students daily. And yo-yoing back and forth each year is not sustainable for our school. Please reinstate our funds. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Good evening. I'm concerned about the Fairmont cuts. One point one percent. How many students is that? It could be just a small number of students. And as the parents have said, it's important to keep those funds where at the student level. And the cutoff, I understand, is forty-nine percent. And they weigh, and they're under the forty-nine percent. So I really hope that you can find other ways to cut the Title I funds from Fairmont. It is a good school and the population is so well-integrated. It really is a model for the rest of the district. So good luck on that. I know it's a struggle, but I think that hopefully you can do this. Thank you. Good evening.
Our next public speaker is Amanda Foster.
A statement by Jeanette Lopez Urbina, mother of Ada Urbina Lopez, sixth grade at Vista Academy. I am concerned about the budget cuts for my child's school. As a mental health therapist and educator of future therapists, I am aware of the importances, I'm sorry, importance of best practices in teaching institutions. When budget cuts are made, the impact is felt on the quality of the education that students receive as it puts pressure and stress on remaining teachers to extend themselves and fill the gaps of resources that were cut. Vista Academy has been a godsend for my child and our family. Prior to Ada attending Vista, she was lost in the shuffle of mainstream school where she experienced bullying, teachers that were not even aware that bullying was taking place, and an education where my child felt bored as she was not feeling academically challenged. Since attending Vista, Ada has thrived academically and has been greatly supported in her social and emotional needs as well. She often feels stimulated, challenged appropriately, and her amazing teachers have built on her strengths, allowing her to feel seen and validated as a student. The individualized approach that Vista takes on for its students is an amazing resource. And support for children like Ada who thrive in school environments where teachers are dedicated to teaching creatively and enthusiastically within the system that the school has created so that it can be successful. Therefore, I ask you reconsider the planned cuts that will affect Vista Academy, especially due to the following. Students deserve highly qualified and experienced teachers for their grade level as this ensures that students will be exposed to a curriculum that will help them thrive academically and to set them up for success in the future. Often my worry about public school is this issue of budget cuts and its stress on teachers. Therefore, it is a shame that I would have to consider private school, which is not affordable for me or many families in the Bay Area, to make up for a public school system's decision to make budget cuts and affect quality of education. Vista was cut last year and had to readjust these cuts, making these cuts will impact the system further, putting it at a risk of creating a culture of scrambling, reducing quality, ultimately impacting goals of education. I am proud to speak on Jeanette's behalf. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Oh, whoops, somehow you called me twice.
Sorry about that. Our next public speaker is Adriana DeVos. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, good evening and thank you guys for listening to us. Um, I am a teacher at Fairmont Elementary School. Um, and I think you've already know what I'm gonna talk about, which is the reduction in our budget. Um, as many people have said before, I am incredibly concerned because the funding that's being taken away is going to disproportionately affect our students most in need. Right now, a big chunk of our Title I funding goes towards paying teachers to offer intervention after school. It also goes towards counselors. Uh, we use some of our, uh, LCFF funding for online licenses that allow us to provide intentional and useful online apps for children to use while we are doing small groups. And it's these types of interventions that have helped us have some of the highest growth in our school district. And so, um, I'm asking that you reconsider, um, taking away our Title I funding. And I, I noticed as a part of the SCC team that teachers are being asked to improve the proficiency of our students. And yet, at the same time, all of the resources we have to do that is being taken away. And teachers are often asked to do the impossible, but sometimes it's too much. And I think this is far too much. And we need to support teachers and more importantly, we need to support our students who are most in need. Thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker is Jesse Spears.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two daughters at Fairmont Elementary. I first wanna say, uh, I want to acknowledge how hard the school board works. The school board is listening to comments from teacher, from teachers, from parents, community members. As well as the district, they're working really hard to allocate funds. They're doing their very best. I want to, uh, ask that we, that you guide them to reevaluate the Title I status for Fairmont Elementary. Basically, we have, that, that criteria is determined by, sorry, I'm looking for my numbers here. Uh, that criteria is determined by the, the free and reduced price lunch meals. That rate went down by point one percent year over year, which equates to one child. Now, the reason why that rate is lower than it used to be in twenty-eighteen, in twenty-eighteen, it used to be fifty-four point four percent. The reason why is because now we get free lunches automatically. So now families don't need to fill out the form in order to get the free lunch. There is no, there is no pressing need. Uh, the one less thing for that struggling family to worry about is to fill out that form. However, it impacts Title I funding allocation. Um, another issue is that we have a lot of Arabic and, um, let's see here, the other one. Arabic, Mandarin, Nepali, Japanese, Punjabi, Urdu speakers, more than other schools in the district. And the form is not available in those languages. It's only available in English and Spanish online. So I'm asking you to, uh, use your wisdom and guidance to help the district prioritize reevaluating the Title I status for Fairmont Elementary. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Eric Hughes. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for, uh, giving me some time and I apologize in advance if you hear the screaming of some small children in the background. I'm an educator at the Vista family of schools and, uh, I'm just so happy and grateful to be a member of that community. As you've heard, a lot of the families and the students saying, this is a truly student-centered environment. Um, it's not just a buzzword that we try and throw around that you'll probably hear in every vision in the school. Um, but this is really an authentic, student-centered environment. This school removes barriers for a lot of students and we're seeing that. And although the school is virtual, the people and their needs and these relationships are very real. And so I hope that you will do what you can to save our school and to strengthen it. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Kamia Hall.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Kamia Hall. I am a junior and cheerleader for Deans High School and I'm here to talk about the student support, support services. The head for that job title is Damon Cole. Dame is a great support system for me and many others. I've been through a lot of difficult times and Dame has always been someone to go to when I need help. You know, teenagers being in love sometimes, Dame was always the person I was able to go to. That, that position being taken away can be a high risk for, high risk for any other teenagers that's going through difficult problems. Teenage years are almost the highest for mental health issues. You cutting his position because of budget cuts can damage students and the, and the school as a whole. Dame is not a staff, but he is a father, father, father figure, uncle, and brother to the Deans High School community. He's also helped past students like my brother Rico Tofri and Kyrie Hall and hundreds of other students. Dame also helped with mental health for many other sports, including cheerleading, football, basketball, baseball, et cetera. He is also diverse when he comes to, with his help. I also want to advertise the roles for Tyree Reed as well. If you want to raise awareness for your schools and have students feel safe, then why cut such a beloved position and safe place for students? Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Said Asad. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public speaker is Stephanie Duran. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Duran and I'm a mother to a kinder, a third grader, and a kinder, a soon-to-be kinder. And I'm here to ask you to take Highland into consideration as they are in need of big, of a big remodel. Some of the rooms are having lots of problems and it's not fair to be bringing new students to these rooms that are not in well condition. And from these rooms being like this, my daughter and her kinder and some of her kinder classmates are getting sick and having respiratory issues. And not too long ago, they had to switch classrooms. And Mrs. Prior had told us, parents, we were gonna get answers as to why they're, they were switching rooms. And we have not got an answer from that. We don't know if it's mold or if it's something else. And it's not fair to our students and their teachers also are getting sick. So I, you know, I So I, you know, I ask for you guys to take Highland into consideration as to, you know, I don't want my new kinder to be getting sick or my soon-to-be first grader to be getting more sick than sometimes she is. And their teachers, it's not fair to them either. So I, you know, as, as a mother and hopefully everybody who's listening to me is a mother, they can, you know, say, hey, let's go check Highland, let's go, you know, because it's been a lot of issues, you know? So I, you know, I beg you guys for um, to take into consideration to go check it out and have, you know, some type of answer for our kinder classrooms, and then that's it. Okay, thank you.
Our next public comment is Wesley Alexander.
Mr. Alexander, before you start uh public in the building, we are at our hour mark. So after Mr. Alexander, public comments are going to reduce to one minute. But please feel free to email your public comments into the entire board, because we don't want to miss anything that you have to say. And you can find our email addresses at the uh WCCUSD website and just type in school board, and all of our emails will come up. Mr. Alexander, thank you so much. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Greetings, board. Thank you for your time. There's some powerful things happening at Deansa High School, and it's really, really important that we don't make a decision that can have generational implications, not just to the current students there, but for the students that will be coming behind them. And with that said, I want you to know that I sat in your shoes before. I've had the opportunity work for Fortune 60 Ventures and be responsible for more than $500 million in budgets in terms of prioritization, but also business contraction. I also understood that when we had to make budget cuts, it was important for us to do our due diligence to understand what would be the impact to those who are delivering the most value to our schools. And it would be unfortunate if the four African-American males who are providing value in multiple ways that other people cannot or on the chopping block to disturb what these students are benefiting from. It would not make sense in terms of the human impact, in terms of the financial impact, and ultimately to the stability of that entire school. We need to take the time to understand what are we sitting in these positions for? To make the tough decisions, but to make the decisions that make the most sense to ensure that we do not take away the foundation that exists at that particular high school. And so I implore you to reverse the decision that you make, because it's evident that the young people are here to advocate for the coaches right now to say that they are valuable, that they are making an impact. And there is no other alternative at this time, especially coming out of COVID, for us to remove the literal foundation for these young people and for those that are coming behind them. So with that said, I hope you guys make the wise decision. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Saida Said. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Uh, sorry. Um, good evening, Honorable Trustees and Dr. Hurst. My name is Saida Said, and I'm a teacher at Fairmont School. Like the rest of uh the parents that spoke tonight and Mr. Bo, I would like to uh urge you to restate our school's Title I funding for next year. I would like to give you a glimpse of how this funding has helped my students. I started this year with eight students who are at two, who are two or three grade levels below. Um, eight of twenty-one students, a third of my class. So I pull this group for small group instruction in math and reading every day, but this is not enough. Their needs are multifold and significant. So twice a week after school, I tutor these students in reading and math, giving them targeted and specific attention that they need. This group of struggling students also use an online resource for reading while they get up to speed. So all these resources are a bit full by our SSC funds. And people ask me, what is my proudest achievement? I will say that is seeing this group of students being able to read when they couldn't just a few months ago. Most of them have improved one grade level in reading, one has jumped to two grade levels. So I'm devastated at the prospect that teachers like me might not be able to offer tutoring to other students who are struggling next year or offer them the additional resource that they need. Please do all you can to reinstate Fairmont's Title I funding. Our students need it. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Anna Chavez.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm here because I'm a kindergarten teacher at Highland, and I have had to move my classroom based on the conditions of the building. I have witnessed my students develop headaches, rashes, watering eyes, breathing conditions. Unfortunately, many of my students are now on inhalers for breathing. We have had to leave our large kindergarten classroom to go to a much smaller classroom with no bathrooms. Unfortunately, now they have to share bathrooms with upper grade students with no adult supervision, and the campus is not secure, so it is very unnerving. My students have missed out on a lot of learning time due to this move, and it has been very traumatic, especially for my students who have IEPs and cannot handle the change well. My students unfortunately are all still showing sickly symptoms in our new classroom. So while the classroom is far down the hallway from their old class, in, this indicates that the whole building at Highland is not healthy and safe to be in. We are witnessing a lot of Band-Aid fixes occurring daily, such as painting and fixing. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Malena Lopez.
Hello, I'm the parent of a special ed first grader at Fairmont Elementary. As you know now, we've been informed that Fairmont's site budget will be reduced by sixty-six percent next year due to the loss of Title I funds and reduction of the, of LCFF site funds. This will be catastrophic for our educators who are already stretched thin and struggling to meet the needs of our highly diverse student body. Fairmont is a full inclusion school that has helped my son grow beyond my expectations. The support he has been given is exceptional. How can we expect this support to continue with less than half the budget that they depend on? We ask that our Title I funds be restored using the same exception that applied last year. And also, the count is for um free lunches is off by at least one, because I'm one of the families that didn't realize how important it was to sign up, to assign the, up for the, the form. Um, and also, I'm so proud of these students, and I hope that you can give them what they're asking for.
Our next public comment is Tanya Woods. Tanya Woods.
Okay, hi. I change makers. So I want you guys to remember why you took this job in the first place to make a positive impact in your community. Don't lose sight of that. So I'm a mother of three students from Deansa High School. Um, all, so last, let me give you a little personal experience. Last year, my son was involved in an incident on cap and, on campus that caused him to be hospitalized. These two gentlemen helped defuse the situation. Main reason is because they are vested in the students. They care about the integrity of Deansa High School and keeping it safe. We need to be able to have those people, those foundational, foundational people that care about the, the students and the safety of the school there to be able to provide our children a safe space to go to school, to learn. Also, Coach Tyreek was also on, um, after that happened to my son, he did not want to go to school. He felt scared or whatever.
Our next public speaker is Edith Jordan McCormick. Our next public comment is Leona Wilson.
Hi, my name is Leona Wilson. Um, I'm here to speak upon my son who attends El Cerrito High School, Tyree Johnson. He now attends Vista based upon a situation that occurred last month. By virtue of that, he now attends Vista. Last week, I was told by Ms. Blumer, who is the vice principal, that he can come to spring football practice as long as it's after school. Suddenly, I was alerted that he can't be on campus despite the practice being after school. He only attends for two days of the week with his uncle, Timothy Johnson, who is also one of his coaches. I'm not certain what has occurred, expected for the principal vetoing the decision by Ms. Blumer. The principal exhibits every day he has a problem with black students, especially the black students that's on the football team. And a lot of parents can vouch for that and feels the same way as I do. The principal is doing everything in his power to get rid of my son, Tyree Johnson, and the football team. The football team isn't just players, they are brothers, and I'm here to speak up for my son. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Shanae Seals.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shania Seals. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of Vista Virtual. Um, I have a child who attends that school. She's currently in the ninth grade. She's been attending since the seventh grade, and since her being there, she has really enjoyed it. She has thrived. And one of her teachers, unfortunately, I was told, is on the chopping block to get taken off of the staff next year. And I'm trying to understand why would we do such things when you have students who are being so successful? My daughter was a valedictorian. She literally is taking two college courses right now, all because of teachers like Ms. Mahi, who has helped her advance in all that she's doing. And so I just wanted to just ask if you can please reconsider your decision of chopping those three teachers from Vista Virtual, because they are really making an impact. But not only that, as of March, second and third graders read over a thousand books on epic. We utilize stretch goals to make sure that tigers who are learning, they can fill in gaps and make progress at each grade level. They have in-person field trips, they meet up, so it's not just that they're virtual.
And our last public comment is Alejandro Navarro.
Mediac conductor, I'm gonna say this on Spanish also, please. Let me try. Okay, I'm here um because at last minute uh find out the Title I fund is going to be removed from uh Fairmont School. And that affects uh my kids, my older kid, who was just now in high school, he, he attended school. It was better helper and everything. He become a C scout. Now he's in high school. He's a football player, and I found out that he's also um having a hard time with uh on next season, because his coach is going to go somewhere else. They need to have them here. The funding has to be there. The people has the power. Now, you guys, I just noticed, you know, you guys have a arrangement for Cinco de Mayo, and then the school don't have funding for that. Also, the teachers don't have shields with the students. They're head-on with the students, teaching them what they're doing. And I just noticed the whole board is not, is, is not complete also. We need to, uh, when we come address, we address the E board, U board. We need to.
Richard, can you please turn the speaker back then?
Yeah, buenas tardes. Vengo aqui hablar sobre el funding que se le está quitando a la escuela Fairmont. Del título número uno, este, de la cual va a afectar con sesenta y seis por ciento. Mi hijo mayor acudió a la Fairmont, le ayudó bastante. Él ahora se encuentra en la high school, él, 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 él acudió a C scouts, él maneja un bote de más de cien pies de largo, un, un ex Navy um, uh, torpedo retriever. Él está en el equipo de fútbol. Me doy cuenta que él va a perder sus coches para moverlos, este. Necesitamos este, que ustedes nos hagan caso. El, el board no está completo. Necesitamos que cuando hablemos con ustedes, el board esté completo. Este, se les paga por eso, para que estén aquí y nos escuchen a nosotros. La gente tiene poder para que nos escuchen. Nosotros pagamos impuestos y es dinero que sale de mi bolsa y la bolsa de todos los taxpayers. Gracias. Thank you for your listen.
Thank you very much for public comment. We did say that uh under public comment, it says the board doesn't typically respond. I do want to let you know, sir, that none of the things that you see here are paid for out of district budget. So I don't, I want to make sure that you understand that, so you don't have that misconception, but thank you for bringing that forward. But I just didn't want you to think that this was stuff was paid for out of district budget. It's not. Trustee Phillips, you have something to say? No? Okay. Uh, we are now moving on to our standing reports. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. We appreciate it. We're moving to standing reports. We have MDAC and Asset. Is MDAC in the room, please? Is MDAC online? No, we will move to Asset.
Hello, good evening. I can go? Okay.
Sorry, let's wait for the timer, and then you can go.
I'm gonna go grab mine now.
Okay, Ms. Harrison, we're ready when you are.
I'm ready. Thank you, board. Um, I'm Zalon Harrison, and I am the chair of the African-American Society of Business Team. And I'm here this evening to give you guys an update on some things we've been working on and some concerns and some successes. So the first thing is that we've been working on our Swahili language school, and we've talked to several of you all. We just are waiting to hear back what next steps are. We have done surveying, we have talked to parents and held small focus groups in the community, but we would like to share that information with you all and to also seek, we're also seeking your guidance on how this is going to be a partnership and how we can work more effectively on what you all need from us, so we can make that happen. So that's that, and Dr. Hurst has reached back out to us, so he's responded to our email. So thank you, Dr. Hurst, for that. The next thing is, I did speak about earlier the LCAT recommendations. Um, we are concerned about the OASO office. We know it's been, from what we've observed, dismantled in some parts. We do agree that it wasn't as effective as we thought it should be. However, we do want resources and we do want someone held accountable to make sure our parents are being engaged in the district's activities and resources, and that our students' data is being paying attention to how they're failing or how they're succeeding, what's working. So in dismantling the office, we don't want our children to get put aside or the needs of our children to just be thrown in the pile with all the other kids. We were told that the principals would be forming APACs. That has not ever worked, never. So I'm begging you all not to put the formulation of our APAC solely on the principals. They have a lot on their plates, and forming another parent group on their campus sometimes is not. And forming another parent group on their campus sometimes is not first and foremost for them. And I hope that you make sure in the LCAP that you ensure that there is staff secured for our children and our parents to get the things they need and the superintendent's strategic plan about equity and inclusion and those things. As our president, Ms. Jamila Foe speaks about a lot, we want our children to be included in all the fabric of the district, not just the black part. We want to be in all the fabric. And the next thing is, we want to make sure that we have support for our activities and the budget allows for clear communication on what, when we give advisory, what's gonna happen and what's not gonna happen. We have a couple of activities planned coming next month, and that's our honor ceremony, which is the sixteenth, and then our graduation, which is the seventeenth of May. And then we also have the Parents Appreciation and Informational Night on the tenth. And all of those activities will be at Dijon. So you could check with Communications, they should have that. And then also, you guys paid for a big spot in Juneteenth. I'm on the Juneteenth Planning Committee. So we will be also having the honor roll students participating in the Juneteenth Parade. And we look forward to the district participating in our community events. And we would also want to have the support of the district in keeping our next school year activities with a budget and not us throwing things at the wall and we're not able to fully include the whole community with marketing, with information, and with resources. It's all just really kind of last minute. And we want to make sure that we are reaching out to our forty-five that we established this year, APACs. And thank you, district, woo woo. We got more APACs and more parents involved. And just to keep that momentum going and keep our scale is a very big part of this work. So I'm complete and thank you all so much for everything you guys have done. And I appreciate it. And there's a lot more that we need to do. And I appreciate all you all that have met with us, that has helped us along this way. Mr. Phillips, Audrey, Dr. Hurst, Jamila, Demichel, and Leslie Hasht. So thank you. And Dr. Hurst's secretary for taking all my phone calls and emails and getting us on the schedule. So I appreciate you all. And you guys will be hearing from us again. Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to Agenda Review and Adoption. Board, are there any changes to the agenda? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. To clarify, on E1, which is the resolution about authorizing the lease, leaseback delivery method, will we be discussing or be allowed to discuss the presentation from last week that was uploaded?
You have a presentation by Ms. Payne. And then after that, we will do our traditional questions, three questions, comments, and we'll have public comment. And then we will take action.
Okay, so she's gonna go over that in detail.
Yes, she has a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Trustee Reckler?
Yes, I don't, yes, I don't have anything else on that, thank you.
Any more changes or questions about the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted without objection. We are now moving to Item B11, Approval of the Minutes, April tenth and April seventeenth. Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing no changes, the minutes are adopted without objection. We are now moving to Resolution Number 2324-61, School Lunch Hero Day, May third, 2024. Director Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Good evening, President Smithville, trustees, and Superintendent Hurston, community. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children.
Thank you so much. Board, are there any motions on this item?
Well, I'll go ahead and move Resolution 2324-61, School Lunch Hero Day, May third, 2024.
Thank you, I'll second. Are there any comments? Okay, could we please put up a one-minute timer? Trustee Phillips, you'll get us started, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank not just the school lunch hero, but every person who works in our food services program. They're all heroes. They all directly affect our children in one of the most important ways that they can by providing and helping to provide one of the necessities of life, and that's food, healthy food. So I want to thank all of you, on behalf of my family, on behalf of other families as well. Your contribution to our school program is essential and important. And I'm sorry if we do not recognize you enough.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Are there any other comments? Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
I just want to echo that, I agree. It's, if you've ever been to that kitchen and you see where they work, they need that upgrade real bad. And the amount that they pump through there is just insane. And, you know, maybe some more people should take a trip down there and see what happens. It's truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to a vote. We'll start with you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Paukar?
Yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
President Smithvilles?
Smithvilles, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Passing it back to you, President Smithvilles, thank you. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to Item B13. Is that correct? Thank you so much. Resolution 2324-72, Jewish American Heritage Month. Director Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education and WCCUSD Superintendent proclaim the month of May, 2024, as Jewish American Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education encourages activities to deepen appreciation of the multicultural and multi-faith diversity of the West Contra Costa community to develop understanding across cultures and to reduce incidences of bias and hate.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you. I move Resolution Number 2324-72, Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you, is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Thank you very much. Are there comments? We'll put a minute on the clock. Trustee Phillips, you're first, please.
I, I just want to take this moment to recognize the Jewish American community, including our colleague on the board, Trustee Reckler. One of the things that I want to point out about this particular segment of our community is that there is a very long, even though we don't talk about it right now, but there's a very long history of civil rights advocacy and within the Jewish American community in combination and concert with the African American community. And I think sometimes we forget that, but it is very important and it has been very essential to the progress that we have made and I believe will continue to make. So I just want to say thank you to the Jewish American community for everything that it has done in partnership in the past and in the present and to be in the future.
Thank you so much, Trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Jewish Americans, of which I am one, have a rich and diverse history. My own family story is we were kicked out of Spain in the Decré de l'Ambré, fourteen ninety-two. Moved to Turkey for five hundred years and moved to the United States sometime in the early nineteen thirties. Over that time, not me personally, but the Jewish people have contributed, have made notable and important contributions to law, art, education, science, technology, film, comedy, the labor movement. And now I'd like to switch to the White House proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month. We honor, I'm just taking pieces of it. We honor Jewish Americans who have never given up on the promise of our nation. We celebrate the contributions, culture, and values that they have passed down from generation to generation and that have shaped who we are as Americans. We remember that the power lies within each of us to rise together against hate, to see each other as fellow human beings and to ensure that the Jewish community has afforded the safety, security, and dignity that they deserve as they continue to shine their light in America and around the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I think that it's been said very well, but I also wanted to thank and recognize our Jewish community here in West Contra Costa for everything they do. I specifically want to recognize our students who are going through a lot in everything that's going on around the world right now. And I just want to remind us, we know here, but remind our community that our schools are no place for hate, no matter what you believe in or what you stand for. And we stand with all of our students, no matter what their background is. So I just want to continue to lift their voices, as my colleagues have, and thank them for everything they do and that this is a place for them and that we value them just as much as we value every, every single other of our students. And that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Board, I would like to say, thank you for adopting this proclamation. These proclamations, whether it be Arab American History Month, African American History Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, any of the other months that I inadvertently left off. This is why the majority of the board adopted anti-racism. This is why we have to push towards anti-racism as a district, so all of our students, all of our families, all of our community are seen. Because we are battling decades and decades and generations and generations and generations and generations of normalized separate, instead of understanding our intersectionality. So the work of anti-racism helps bring the intersectionality together and it ensures that everyone feels safe, feels heard, feels valued, and feels appreciated. Thank you, Board. Thank you to all of our Jewish American heritage community members, as well as everybody else that we represent at WCCUSD. I am complete. We are now moving on to Resolution Number 2324-73, National School Nurse Day.
President Smithvilles.
Forgot to vote, didn't I?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We need to move to the vote. Trustee Paukar, you're up.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Good. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Now we are moving on to Resolution Number 2324-73, National School Nurse Day, 2024. Director Forrest, this is yours.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education celebrates and acknowledges, acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts toward meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of health care in our schools and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses and nurses in WCCUSD. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education proclaims Wednesday, May eighth, 2024, as School Nurse Day in WCCUSD and commend its observance to all citizens.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? I'll move Resolution 2324-73, National School Nurse Day, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board, are there comments? Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
I don't know the exact number of nurses that we have anymore, but I know it's less than twenty and seven. That's appalling. And I thank you for everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I too want to recognize other school nurses that we do have. And for the amount of students that we have, we don't have nearly enough nurses here. I want to also take this opportunity to talk about student health, right? Because that's what school nurses are about. And in honor of that, I am requesting that all of the issues that were brought up in public comment regarding Highland and the multiple health concerns that were shared from parents and staff that they're looked into. And if there is a problem at that school, a health problem, that cannot be remediated by the children being moved, the school needs to be closed. And I don't know what the issue is, so I'm asking for it to be looked into. But if that's necessary, it's necessary.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let me go to Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. I also wanted to recognize our nurses. I think that they do an incredible job for the amount of the day they are. I remember, and I'm looking at Ms. Neely Johnson, when we had three at one point. And thankfully, we were able to hire more. And where we got to eleven, and now we're at seven. So we definitely want to continue to prioritize them. And I know that HR is working really hard to continue to find them and recruit them. But just like teachers, we have a nurse shortage in the state, especially for schools. So that has to be continued to be prioritized for our students and for each other, meaning the nurses. I also wanted to agree with Trustee Phillips and just mention that there is a current investigation going on from facilities around Highland. So I didn't want us to just leave it there. There is currently happening where a third party has been, has started that work. So I look forward to hearing the results from that. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler, do you have a comment?
Yeah, if I could just briefly add, I just wanted to add that it's not anything that the district is doing as to why there aren't nurses. It's a funding issue from the state. So I just want to make that clear, that it's not any dereliction of duty or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. I would like to say that school nurses are vital to the system. I know that the school nurse at Lupine is absolutely amazing. He's there every day doing more than just the job title of a nurse. When he's out on the yard, he changes people's experience. The boys have a great time playing basketball with him. The girls have a great time with volleyball with him. So school nurses do more than what we may think they do. They are really integral parts of our elementary schools, middle schools and high schools, to be quite frank. So thank you, school nurses, for all that you do. We see you. I am complete. We are now going to the vote. Trustee Paul Paukar?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving on to Resolution Number 2324-74, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, 2024. Doctor, doctor, I'm sorry. Director Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education proclaims May 2024 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month to inspire equity and celebrate diversity in our schools and communities throughout the district.
Thank you so very much. Board, is there a motion? Go ahead.
President Smithvilles, I move Resolution Number 2324-74, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just want to give a shout out to my, uh, API brothers and sisters in West County, um, who are doing tremendous work, leading our county, um, leading our community, and just being good neighbors as well. So just, I, I want to say thank you, and I'm glad that we have this opportunity to recognize you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. I'd like to second Trustee Phillips' comments and thank the Asian American Pacific Island Heritage of Islander community for all of their contributions. You've, you've definitely made us all better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? I would like to say thank you very much to our Asian American Pacific Islanders that are in our schools, in our community, and we value and we see you. Thank you so very much for all that you have contributed to what we call this United States of America. I am complete. We are now moving on. Nope, vote. Caught myself. We are now moving on to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving to Resolution Number Two Three Two Four Dash Seven Five, Classified School Employee Week. Uh, Director Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa, excuse me, that the Board of Education hereby declares May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as Classified School Employee Week in the West Contra Costa Unified School District in recognition of and appreciation for all classified employees and their dedication to our students.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion, Board? Go ahead.
I move Resolution Number Two Three Two Four Dash Seven Five, Classified School Employee Week.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board, are there comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you very much. As a former classified school employee, as a former classified school employee union rep, as a current member of Teamsters Eight Five Six, I just want to say thank you so much for everything that you do. Schools could not and would not work without you. I know that in this culture, certificated folks are highlighted, uh, and for good reason. But it is a fact that this thing would not work without you. So thank you for everything that you do, because we could not do any of this without classified school employees.
Thank you very much. Uh, Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, I want to say thank you to all the classified staff. I was a classified staff for over fifteen years, and worked diligently hard, and then I look back, you know, with all of my ones I worked with in safety, and then looking at all of the people I knew throughout the classified staff area of Teamsters Eight Five Six, and so, um, I just want to say we thank you, because without you, the things would not, uh, be able to get done, so we appreciate you every, every bit of, of the way, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Very briefly, I just want to echo and second the comments of Trustee Christian and Trustee Phillips, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. I also want to echo, uh, thanks to our classified staff. I want to just give a quick shout out to all of our classified staff that is in the room, our amazing translators, our amazing tech, uh, staff, uh, and our missing CSOs, or CSSs, sorry, uh, that are in the room and stay with us, uh, here throughout the night, uh, and everyone else who I did not mention, who is classified currently in the room. Um, and I, I agree with everything that has been said by all, all my colleagues. You are all amazing. Thank you for everything you do. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about you as well on my next comments, um, in the next resolution, so I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I could not agree more with, uh, everything that the trustee said. If you have not walked in the shoes of a CSS, if you have not walked in the shoes of our food service workers, if you have not walked in the shoes of our translators or our, or our IT, or the other thousand of things that are classified employees do, you don't have a clue how hard they work, and they work extremely hard. And they work extremely hard, almost invisible. It's, we need to stop and take the time to not only thank our classified staff, but see our classified staff and value them in everything that we do. So when you're off next week doing teacher appreciation, make sure you include staff appreciation, because the staff works hand in hand with the teachers to keep the school running, as well as the administration, so it's everybody's appreciation week. I am complete. I am not complete. We need to move on to the vote. Uh, Trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to our last resolution, Resolution Number Two Three Two Four Dash Seven Six, Day of the Teacher. Director Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District proclaims May eighth, twenty twenty-four, as the Day of the Teacher in West Contra Costa County, and be it further resolved, that the Board of Education urges all citizens to honor our teachers on this and every day of the year.
Thank you very much. I would like to make this motion. I motion that we approve Resolution Number, or accept Resolution Number Two Three Two Four Dash Seven Six, Day of the Teacher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Bless you. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, bless you anyway. Are you gonna ti- time me, or you want me to?
Uh, sorry. Can we get a minute on the clock, please? Go ahead, sir.
I want to thank all of our teachers, uh, for the work that they do, but I want to take a special moment to talk about the teachers at Vista. If that program is downsized, we are going to lose students. Every student that attends Vista, virtual in particular, but Vista period, attends that school for a reason. For some reason, a mainstream or general or full school didn't work for that child. I'll give you an example. My daughter is twelve years old. She's going to start high school at twelve years old. Vista is the only campus, high school campus, that I feel comfortable sending my daughter to in any form or fashion, because she's twelve. If my daughter didn't have a spot at Vista, not, not by choice, but out of necessity, I would withdraw her from the district. And every parent has their story for why their child needs it too.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Phillips. Are there any other comments? Trustee Christian, I'm sorry, Trustee Pal Carr, did I see your hand? Okay, go ahead, Trustee Pal Carr, and then we'll work our way back around. Go ahead.
Um, I would just like to give a thanks to all the teachers in the district. I think that they work so hard, and they've taught me many valuable lessons, and my own mom, she's even a teacher at El Cerrito, so I just think that they're such an integral part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did not know your mother was a teacher. Thank you. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to get, give a shout out to all the teachers in the district, because I know they put all their heart and work diligently day in and day out to educate our young people, and they bring, um, provide resources for our young people. And teaching is, is an area, uh, we are short of, and so, um, but I just want to add, you know, my part is like, you know, I understand a lot what the teachers go through, because I traveled back and forth to Oakland to substitute teach, and, and I see the arena of teaching. And so, um, but I just want to just say to all the teachers, keep up the good work. You're doing a good job. We appreciate you. We thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian, Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, not to take up too much time, but to echo the sentiments of everyone who's spoken so far. We are our people, and schools would be nothing without our people. And teachers are very important in that mix. And so I thank you, and thank you for everyone who's touched a child, who's touched my children. I mean, not physically, but you know, in that impactful, mind-altering way of learning and wanting to learn and be lifelong learners, and I thank you for everything that you do, and, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I also want to echo sentiments. Um, I want to thank all of our teachers. Teachers changed my life. I would be in a very different place if it wasn't for teachers who took it up on themselves to teach me English after school, as you all know my story. Um, I want to, um, just tell the story of a last night. Actually, Trustee Christian and President Smith Folds and I went to the STEM night for Mea Vista K eight. And this was, gosh, I think it was from five to eight o'clock. And the classified staff, the principal, the teachers, they were all there, so happy, putting all these activities together for students, like, on a Thursday night when they could be doing a million other things, and they needed to go back home and probably do their lessons for the next day. I mean, I think that just speaks so strongly about, and I know that happens in all of our schools, and that just speaks so strongly about our staff, our teachers. And I'm just so thankful for every single one of them that comes to our schools every single day, because, uh, they are changing the lives of, of thousands of kids, so, uh, thank you to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um, thank you, teachers, for everything that you do. I challenge all of us as board members to go volunteer in a classroom in WCCUSD, volunteer minimally once, but I would love it if we did it once, once or twice a month, but, uh, pick a TK class, or a kindergarten class, or a tenth grade geometry class, or something that's a little bit outside of our comfort zone, and we would truly understand what walking in the, the footsteps of a teacher are. I know some of us are parents or teachers, some of us are married to teachers, some of us used to be teachers, but if you were a teacher pre-COVID and haven't been back into the classroom since, it's a different, it's a different ball of wax, so let's get out there and let's, uh, help our teachers by volunteering and doing what we can in their classrooms, and continuing to see them and value them with all the policy that we pass at the board level. Thank you so very much, and, um, last night when Ms. B dissected the frog, it was absolutely one of the most interesting things that we've seen in a very long time. All the children were engaged, and I was, uh, engaged and grossed out, so I'm complete. Nope, not complete. Take the vote. Trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I am a yes. Okay, everyone, we are now, thank you, thank you so much, Director Forrest, and the Communications Department for all you do to make sure that we are staying on top of our resolutions and seeing and valuing all members of our community, and those things that are so important and should be highlighted in the district, so through their resolutions, through, um, just all that your department does, so thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Um, Board, we are now moving to consent items. Are there anything that we need to change? Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
Yes, removal for brief discussion, C six contracts and C eleven new job description, Senior Administrative Assistant Office of Educational Equity, Title Nine.
Are you pulling all contracts on C six?
Yes, just for brief discussion.
And then you're pulling C eleven for discussion?
Yes, just for brief discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Dr. Hurst, I know you had something that you were gonna pull.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We would like to pull the contract World Story Exchange.
Thank you.
All together. We're pulling it all together off the agenda.
Thank you very much. Anything else? No? Can I get a mo- can I get a motion for consent? No, we just take a vote. I'm sorry. Do we take a vote for consent? Yeah, let's take a vote for consent. Board, we need to take a vote for consent with Item Six and Item Eleven pulled.
And also, and also World Story Exchange taken completely.
Completely off the agenda. Thank you very much. Let's go back again. Board, we're looking for a vote on the consent items, removing, uh, World, World Story Exchange off the agenda completely, pulling contracts number C, C six, and pulling C eleven for both for discussion. That's what we're voting on at this moment. Trustee Pal Carr, your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Sorry, President Smith Folds.
Yes.
I think the motion was a little confusing, and there was no second.
There was not. Let's go back.
Sorry.
No, no, let's listen. Procedure and policy, that's what we need.
Would you like me to make the motion?
Sure, and I'll second it. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the consent items except for, uh, C six and C eleven, where they're being pulled for a discussion, and then the contract, um, which Dr. Hurst mentioned.
Perfect. I'll second that. All right, now we'll go back around. We're gonna do it again, friends. We're gonna go back around again. Trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving to the Superintendent Communication. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Can we pull up the presentation, please? I'd like to say
I'd like to say
to our board, to the public that's listening, we want to start off with our memoriam. The district would like to take the time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away. I regret to inform you that Adrian Harris, former WCCUSD board member, recently passed away. Ms. Harris served as a trustee on the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-nine. She was also a beloved math teacher for twenty-two years. Our thoughts and prayers go up to the family and friends during this challenging time. Can you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. We wanted to take the opportunity to recognize a, a group of people that are our leaders, uh, at our school sites, and that's our principals. Um, this is National School Principals Day is recognized on May the first, twenty twenty-four. I heard us all talking about our amazing teachers that we have across our district. I will say as well, we have amazing principals at all of our school sites. Um, I will share with you that our principals work extremely hard. I'm very proud of them. And I would also say it's one of the hardest jobs in education, one of the hardest. Uh, we have several, um, positions, all our positions, that's working really hard, but we really want to just take the opportunity to recognize our principals this day, and it says at the bottom here, celebrate and share with us. Help educators know and principals know just how appreciated they are by sharing a message on social media, tagging at WCCUSD, and then also using the hashtag, #ThankAPrinciple. Thank you for all you do, principals. In our next slide, I want to echo what our board members have said about our teachers. The hardest working job, in my opinion. I have had the opportunity to be in several classrooms. I've also had the opportunity, because of our teacher shortage, to teach in our classrooms. And, um, as a former teacher, I do know that it is an art. It literally is an art of work, what our teachers do, uh, for our students. They're closest to our students. They have the most impact. So I just wanted to share a word of thanks to all of our teachers as well. And it has the same thing. We want to thank our teachers and celebrate our teachers, tagging at tagging at WCCUSD and using the hashtag, thank a teacher. We also wanted to share a highlight about our teacher residency program. We have 16 teacher residencies or residents who are almost done with their residency year and getting ready to move into their own teaching positions for next year. This also means that there are 16 amazing mentor teachers to appreciate as well, who've been guiding and supporting these residents who have been in their classes this year. So again, thank you for all of our amazing teachers across our district. Thank you for all you do. Next slide. We all, to your attention, lupus awareness month. Let's make lupus visible. According to the Lupus Foundation of America, lupus is a chronic disease that can cause inflammation and pain in any part of the body. It's an autoimmune disease, which means that your immune system attacks healthy tissue instead. This month is meant to spread awareness on the invisible illness because it's often unrecognized from the visible eye. And next slide, we want you to join us on May the 10th, 2024, as World Lupus Day for the Lupus Awareness Walk in honor of Gina Stewart, beloved Pinot Valley High School teacher of 17 years. Also, we've made a link available for those who want to make donations or through the school bake sales leading up to and at the event. In our next slide, we wanted to begin sharing with the public all of our graduations. I am going to read them. For May the 17th, we have our OASAP Black Graduation, 6:00 PM at Dejane. May 18th, we have Middle College at 10:00 AM at Pinot Valley at the Theater. May 31st, we have Pinot Valley High School at 6:00 PM at Pinot Valley High. June the 1st, we have Vista Virtual, 11:00 AM, Pinot Valley Theater. June 1st, we have Gateway at 3:00 PM at Contra Costa Community College at the Knox Theater. June 3rd, we have Adult Education, 6:00 PM, the Richmond High Theater. June 4th, we have Deanna High School, 6:00 PM at Hercules High. June 5th, we have El Cerrito High School Graduation, 6:00 PM at El Cerrito High School. June 6th, we have our Transition Graduation, 11:00 AM at Vista Hills. June 6th, Richmond High, 6:00 PM at Richmond High School. June 7th, Kennedy High Graduation at 6:00 PM at Kennedy High. June 8th, Hercules High School Graduation at 10:00 AM at Hercules High. June 8th, Greenwood Academy at 2:00 PM at Greenwood Academy. And then at the next slide, we want to make sure that we all know our reclassification ceremony. It's going to be May the 20th at the Pinot Valley High School Quad. And that will be from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. There is limited space, so they are asking, we are asking that you RSVP. Participating families have already been sent the invitations. And then our next slide. Also want to bring to your attention our African American Students of Honor Ceremony. It's going to be May the 16th here at Dejane, and that will be 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And again, limited space. Participating families have already been sent invitations. Please RSVP by this Friday, May the 3rd. And then we wanted to recognize also some upcoming events. We're really excited about our ESN Prom Spring Formal Dance. That's this Saturday, May the 4th, 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. That's going to be at El Cerrito High School. And it does say it's invite only. Please contact the Special Ed Department to RSVP. And then also, we wanted to share Rich City Kids Showcase. It's going to be Friday, May the 10th, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Dejane Middle School. And that concludes my updates from the superintendent. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Hurst. We are now moving to questions, board. Are there any questions about the superintendent report? We're doing three questions. Seeing no questions, we are now moving on. Again, Dr. Hurst, thank you so very much for your report. We're now moving on to our first action item, E1, Resolution Number 2324-71, authorizing the lease, 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 leaseback delivery method and adopting procedures and criteria for evaluating qualifications and proposals of contractors for the Kennedy High School Modernization Project and the Richmond High School Modernization Project. Ms. Payne, this is your item.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent, Board, Cabinet, Community, my name is Melissa Payne and I am the Executive Director of Contracts Administration for the District. This is a little bit of a carryover, so we got kind of the five-minute preview a week ago, but I'm back to give you the full show. So we're going to get started here and tonight we're going to be talking about construction project delivery methods. And a more simple way to say that is how do we procure the team we need to build or modernize a school? And so the most common delivery method is called design, bid, build. And so in that method, you hire an architect. An architect designs a project all the way through. It's approved by the required agencies and then you put it out to bid. And when you put that out to bid, then the contractors submit a bid pursuant to the Public Contract Code process. And the lowest responsive, responsible bidder is then awarded the contract. And so that is also known as like a hard bid. So that's also known as kind of the traditional delivery method, and that's how the majority of our projects are delivered. So the second two delivery methods that you see here, design, build and lease, leaseback, are what are known as integrated project delivery methods. So they have a lot of similarities and a few differences that we'll look at in a second. But what's fundamentally different about design, build and lease, leaseback is that integrated project delivery method means that you have the contractor and the architect working together before the subcontractor bidding process. And by bringing together the contractor and the architect, there can be a lot of benefits in that integrative model. They collaborate with engineers, architects and contractors to look at more innovative solutions. They're able to evaluate each other's work and estimates. And so here at West Contra Costa, we have, we do a lot of traditional design, bid, build. You approved a couple of those awards earlier tonight. And we've done a couple of design, build projects. So the Michelle Obama School, currently the Lake Elementary School Campus Replacement Project that's still under construction. Those are all design, build. But tonight, we're really here to share with you and talk more about the lease, leaseback delivery method. And this isn't a method that we have used here at West Contra Costa, but it is a very common method used by a number of public agencies and a lot of school districts. And so now let's take a look at what that looks like. Next slide. So the first one you see here, this is the traditional. So the district hires an architect, put together the plans, put it out to bid. We hire a contractor. And next slide. And so this slide shows you design, build. And so this is the first integrated project delivery method that we're looking at. And again, this is one that we've used on a couple of projects. And within this delivery method, we actually have two architects. So we have a program architect. And what that program architect does is they work closely with the community and the district to put together what we call bridging documents. And those bridging documents define the spaces and the parameters of the project. And ultimately, we use those bridging documents along with a number of other district reference documents, like our material product standards, our sole source products, our education specifications that define our spaces and how we use them. We put that out to bid. So when we put that out to bid, we end up procuring a design, build entity. And so we award that to one design, build entity. And so instead of having a contractor and an architect, we have one entity. Here at West Contra Costa, as we've done those procurements, and I think this is pretty typical with other school districts. In the design, build fashion, a lot of times the contractor is the design, build entity and the architect is a subcontractor to the contractor, if that makes sense, right? So for us, contractually, we have a design, build entity. But in that formation, a lot of times the architect is a sub to the contractor. So now we're going to take a look at the next integrated delivery method that has a lot of similarities with lease, leaseback. A lot of the benefits that we have seen in the projects that we've completed using the design, build delivery methodology are also realized using this delivery method. Because again, you have that collaboration of your engineers, your architect and your contractor before you're going out for those subcontractor bids. Next slide. So in lease, leaseback, the district hires the architect. And then the district can do what is called a lease, leaseback procurement. And so lease, leaseback, we have the architect. The architect always remains under contract directly with the district. But then the district can use the lease, leaseback mechanism, project delivery method, to bring a contractor in prior to construction services. So we get to bring the lease, leaseback contractor in so that they can support with pre-construction services, which allows all of that collaboration. So I want to read this to you because the statute, I have it here for you. If you'd like to see it, it's all highlighted. It's three pages. But it is not very easy to read. So lease, leaseback, the California Education Code, Section 17406 permits a school district to lease a site to a contractor for $1 per year solely for the purpose of the contractor performing construction at that site. The contractor typically leases the site back to the school district in exchange for payments to compensate the contractor for the cost of construction. This, the lease, leaseback project delivery method came about in the 1940s. And so it's something that has been used extensively over the years, but it does raise a lot of questions about what do those leasing components look like? And we'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation. Next slide. But what we'd like to dive into first is statute. I do have a sign in my office and it does say, stay calm or stay calm and carry on pursuant to code. So I assure you that all of these next slides you would find in 17406. That's actually something that's really nice about procurement here in California. The statute is so specific. It tells us exactly what it is that we have to do. And we really want to share that with you tonight so you understand what these steps would be. So the lease, leaseback statutory requirements require competitive selection. And the lease, leaseback statutes were actually updated just a couple of years ago and further emphasized what competitive selection means. So the first step, if the board were to approve the utilization of lease, leaseback, would be that the board must adopt and publish the procedures and guidelines for evaluating the best value. The resolution that is before you tonight is asking for the board to approve the utilization of lease, leaseback for Kennedy High School Modernization and Richmond High School Modernization. And then the supporting resolution outlines all of the steps of the procurement. And when I use the word procurement, what I mean is what is the process for identifying the qualifications, the pricing and the selection of who you would move forward with? So a lot of times what I'll tell my team is imagine you're buying a cell phone and you're trying to decide what is the right plan for you for your cell phone. You look at different carriers, you look at different pricing, you look at different coverage and you find the one that best suits you. Procurement is very similar and that's what we're talking about tonight, but it's for construction services. So the competitive selection process would go through an RFQP process, very similar to design, build. The Department of Industrial Relations has published a pre-qualification requirement. And it's also in statute. And it identifies all of the criteria that a contractor must have, that being the general contractor and any mechanical, electrical and plumbing subs in order to do public works. And so that's the same no matter what delivery method we use. But here, as we're looking at lease, leaseback, we would do the DIR, Department of Industrial Relations Pre-Qualification. Firms, general contractors that met that pre-qualification requirement would then submit the request for qualifications and also their proposal for services for the project. Later in the process, right, you got to hire your general contractor. You need your contractor to work with your architect. But there is a whole plethora of subs that build projects that make them happen. The subcontractors come later. They come after we have completed the design process, completed the approvals with the Division of the State Architect and then the subcontractors. But we wanted to make sure that you know that even if we select a lease, leaseback contractor, the subcontractor pre-qualification and all of the vetting that we do would still continue under this delivery method. Next slide. So solicitation of contractors, I've already kind of shared a lot of these things with you, but I want to highlight a couple of other things. So one of the fundamental differences between a traditional hard bid, design, bid, build and an integrated project delivery method is in the traditional model, it is the lowest responsive, responsible bid on the day that I open the bids. I opened two today. Two o'clock hits, we jump on Zoom, you open it up, the number in the envelope, that's your number. In both integrated models, it's a best value selection, which means pricing is the number one factor, but it's not the only factor. And you have the ability through this very specific competitive procurement process to look at other things like what is your success with lease, leaseback projects? What is your success with high school modernization projects? What is your success with the Division of the State Architect? What are some of the prerequisite experiences, demonstrated experiences for project success and delivery that you've shown to other K-12 school districts that you could bring that expertise here to the district? So the other thing that we do in our RFQP, and this is something that I'm incredibly proud of here at West Contra Costa, we have a project labor agreement that we've had for more than two decades, going back to 2003. That will be an integral part of our procurement. It's required on all of our bond jobs greater than $1 million. We also have our local capacity building program that prioritizes the hiring of local workers to build our projects. And just quickly, I will share with you that as of January at Lake, more than 57% of the hours worked at Lake Elementary have been performed by local workers in our local capacity building program, based on those definitions. So both of those items will be integral to the procurement. So the advertisement goes in the paper and we talked about the prequal. Next slide. And so the evaluation. I gave a lot of this up earlier. I apologize as we're flipping through the slides. But there's a lot more to look at in a best value competitive evaluation. And we've listed a couple of those here. Who are the staff members from the contractor and what is their expertise? And what would they be, bring to our projects? Those are some of the things that we're able to look at when we use an integrated project delivery method system. So if the board were to approve this resolution tonight, it would allow staff to begin this procurement. This procurement process for Kennedy and Richmond modernization projects. At the conclusion of that procurement process, we would come back to the board. We would say, here's everything that we've done. Here is the recommendation that we're making. And at that time, the board has the ability to do a couple of things, they could award the lease lease back pre construction services. They could say. We don't want to do lease lease back anymore. We want to do a different delivery method, at which point. We could change course. Or they could say, we've looked at the process that you did, we want you to do it again. So we want you to know that tonight's resolution is authorizing lease lease back. As a delivery method and it's authorizing a procurement. But that's as far as it goes, we would be coming back to the board and this in no way precludes us from taking another methodology or project delivery method. If the board were to then approve it after the procurement. That contractor would be able to begin the pre construction services along with the architect we already have under. Our contract. So part of why we're bringing this to the board now. It's because the architects that we have under contracts for Kennedy and Richmond. Are getting closer to the completion of schematic design. In fact, they anticipate that they'll be completing schematic design around July of this year. And so now is a good time. If we are considering the use of the procurement of lease lease back to get that procurement going. So that we would have the time to complete that process, it's a very lengthy process. And bring all of that back to you in alignment with the design schedule. And so that's why you see we rushed it a little bit and brought that resolution tonight. Next slide. So what are pre construction services? What does that mean? What is the value of having a contractor working with your architect? The architect team is the architect, they're the designer, they look at all kinds of things, building code requirements. The integration of systems and HVAC system with the electrical and plumbing that might support it. But a contractor builds things every day, that is their experience and expertise. And when you can bring together those two areas of expertise early on, they really focus on three major components. One of them is called value engineering. And what value engineering does and what is required in the pre construction services. Is they look at the project's goal and intent and say, is there a way to do this? Faster or in a way that provides more value without sacrificing quality? That is one of the values of having your contractor on early. One of the other things that they do is constructibility. They're looking at the document saying, can I build this? Is this work coordinated in such a way that it will be efficient to build? Or is there something that we could do to improve it? They're also looking to see if there's any type of error emissions, something in the design that isn't clear. That could be clarified before we go out to bid, so that we are not missing any of that scope. The last thing that's really valuable in pre construction services is looking at the estimate. Making sure that we are aligning the design. The constructibility of the project with the dollars that are available for that project. And sometimes what can happen in the traditional delivery method. She go through the design process. You go through the approval process and you go to bid and on bid day, you find out how much your project really costs. From the market, sometimes it costs more than we've had budgeted and we've seen that. And so. One of the things that these integrative project delivery methods allow for is that collaboration very early on in design. When it's much more affordable to make changes and improve the overall design of the project. Before you take it out to the bidding market. So pre construction services, that's the. Work with the architect, put it all together and then let's go out to bid. Bidding process. That's when we go out to the market to our subcontractors and we find out what it really costs to build the project. And so that's a very transparent process. It is a competitive process. And it allows the district to be part of that process. And the traditional method, we receive an envelope and it has one number on it. And that number's got everything on it and we don't know. Were there savings in there? Could we have been more competitive for carpentry? Could we have been more competitive for electrical? Was there a way to put that together so that we could have received some more value and savings in the project? But in this method where we are part of that bidding process, we are evaluating it to make sure that it's always competitive. We're evaluating it to make sure that even if the general contractor wants to self perform that work. They have to get competing bids for that work as well. We get to be part of that. And so that transparency really can build in a lot of value. In what that price is on bid day. And then again, we would be bringing that back to the board. And that's when, next, next slide. Okay, I'm so sorry, maybe back one side, I'll talk just a little bit about that. So when we would come back with that final bid, that's when that lease component comes into effect. And so in order to comply with the case law. Established for the leasing and financing components that allow us to use the mechanism of design build. We would need to have a site and facilities lease. That is something that would happen after we had done the full bidding process. So again, another opportunity, we're coming to the board and we're saying. This is how we think we should move forward, is this how we're moving forward? So we would be continually checking in with the board to make sure, are we staying the course? Do we want to make a change? So what that lease would be. Kind of similar again, so. By public contract code, every time we receive what's called a progress application, a pay application from a contractor. We pay them ninety five percent and we hold five percent. Would be very similar in lease lease back, but instead of it being a pay application, it would be a tenant improvement payment. Same thing, they're going to say, I did a hundred thousand dollars worth of work. We're going to send the contractor a check for ninety five thousand, we're going to hold five percent. We do this every day in our office for all of our construction projects. What's different with lease lease back? Is you have to have a financing and lease component. And what that means is that at the completion of construction. That is when the leasing. Finance component, you have to pay back lease back. So that five percent or maybe even less that we would hold. We would then be making payments to the contractor after construction in the form of lease payments. But again, and I know there's a lot of nuance here, so please, I look forward to all of your questions. The lease is for the interest of the build only. And the lease payments that are being made are for the value of the construction of the work. But there would be a lease component where after the project is complete, after we've moved in, we're now occupying the building. We would make the lease payments of that five percent or less value that we've been holding. So. One of the things that we also wanted to highlight, there has been some media related to lease lease back. And lease lease back is something that really has been tested in the courts. And so lease lease back is not a project delivery method that we were looking at a couple of years ago. Because we wanted to see it complete its testing in the courts. What's nice is that the new statute that really. Emphasized what competitive selection looked like and some of those things, since that new statute came into effect. Speaking with legal counsel who has supported many, many clients that have done hundreds and hundreds of lease lease back K twelve projects here in California. They are not aware of any new lawsuit challenges to lease lease back since this new. Ed code was into effect, but we did really want to highlight that and be specific about that. Also, just so that you know, in the statute itself, you won't see the leasing component. So. If any of you want to go home and read the ed code. Like me, you're welcome to, you won't see it there, but it's in the case law. And so if you'd like more information about that, we do have counsel available. On the meeting via Zoom, if there are some technical questions, but we wanted to be really transparent about. The delivery method, next slide. All right. Well, I think that's brought me to questions. Thank you for going on the journey with me. Hopefully I didn't. I get really excited about this stuff, so.
Thank you, Teacher Payne. You did an amazing job. It was very, very good. Board, we're going to go to public comment. Are there any public comments?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. We are now going to go to questions. Board, please remember there are three questions. And we are doing two minute comments. Does anyone have any question? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So what's the reason that you all and facilities want to do this?
So we look at project delivery method on a project by project basis. So for the Kennedy High School Modernization Project and for the Richmond High School Modernization Project, they are very large. Complex, multi-phase, multi-year projects. And so we really believe that an integrated project delivery method would really support these types of projects. We believe that by using an integrated project delivery method and lease lease back specifically. We would have that direct link to the architect throughout the entire project duration, instead of them being potentially a subcontractor under the contractor. We would be working with them directly through the entire project. We think that by using lease lease back, we will. Be able to find more innovative solutions specifically for this project, for these projects, so that we can do more with the dollars that we have available. And so those are really some of the factors and the reasons why we are recommending lease lease back. But just specifically for these two projects.
What's the worst case scenario under lease lease back?
That is a great question. At this time. What we're asking for is the authorization for this type of procurement. So. For the action that we're asking the board to take tonight, I would say the worst case scenario. Would be that we would spend this time doing this procurement and then. The board would make the recommendation or staff may make the recommendation that maybe we should take a different route. And that would cost us the time that we spent doing this type of lease lease procurement.
If I may redirect, what's the worst case scenario using lease lease back? I mean, what are the pitfalls in this method? As opposed to design bid bill, design build, like what, what's the downside of this? Where have people have gotten into trouble if that helps any? But you know, every method has a different downside and what's the downside in, in, in this? If that helps.
I don't know, Phil, if there was anything that you wanted to add at this time, maybe because you have. A lot more experience with lease lease back throughout the state.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Trustee Reckler, the, I'll answer it with a couple of points to make. At the end of the day, when you end up with your contractor. These are very much treated like any other construction project. You're still mending construction, you're still paying ninety five percent. The, the unique thing is at the end of the project, as Payne pointed out. You make lease payments afterwards in that lease back portion. If your question more is what in the process would be complicating or be a problem? I, I, I won't say absolutely nothing, but I will say virtually nothing. Because of the change in the statute. This was about eight years ago when it was changed. Before that, there were a lot of districts that did not worry about conflicts of interest. Did not worry about procurement steps, didn't manage the projects sufficiently because they were treated like a turnkey. The new statute doesn't allow that and we rightfully follow this intricate process of selecting a contractor. So the benefit of using the best value selection in addition to just the price is the plus. We've had people be concerned that the leasehold interest we talk about somehow means that the contractor can take your property away. The contractor can never take your property away. You are a public entity in California, you have sovereign immunity, nobody's taking any of your property away. They'll have a leasehold interest up to the point of in essence, five percent at the end of the project. That's it. That's all they have is leasehold interest over really like five percent of the thing they've built for you. And as long as we issue our payments, there won't be a problem, even if we didn't make all our payments and we somehow ran out of money. The only thing they could try to do is somehow maybe try to take over the building as a tenant of something. And that's, that's never ever happened in the lease lease back. That would be something they would make a movie about. So as far as the risks and the worst case scenario. I think Ms. Payne pointed it out. It takes a little more effort to get to the contractor and they're going to be working pretty long with an architect. If we decide at the end of the day. We want to abandon that and pick somebody under a design bid bill, you would have probably wasted some effort, some money upfront. For that particular contract. Things that come to mind.
And then either for Ms. Payne or for the attorney. Can you? For people who've used this. Or for you yourselves. Do you expect to save money? Or do you expect to get better value and a better? Finished product, if that makes sense?
It's a good question. And I would say, I think both are true. So. With the design build projects that we did. Very similar to lease lease back. There were project savings on all of those projects. We returned contract dollars back. But I also think that the true value comes in the value piece that you mentioned. Because of that collaborative work. And so having the person who's designing and engineering the project, working side by side with the person. Who is going to construct that project and execute that project. You end up with more innovative solutions that help you do more and you do that so early on in design. Sometimes what we see that can happen in the traditional approach is a contractor is bidding a set of plans. That have been designed. But there may be things that are missing, there may be things that are unclear. Those are things that come to the board, oftentimes in the form of a change order. When you take the builder, the architect and the engineers and you have them collaboratively work on that project together and because. The pre construction services require the value engineering, the constructibility. The estimate peer reviews, they're keeping an eye on each other. And so there's a lot of value, problem solving and innovative approaches that end up happening in design. So when that project goes out to bid, some of those emissions, some of those conflicts that sometimes happen in the field. They end up being resolved in design, so they don't happen in the field. And so I do believe that. We have seen on the projects where the value engineering and constructibility have provided the district a better value. And savings on the projects and we need every dollar we have. And so we truly believe and the reason why we're making this recommendation. Is we believe that by doing lease lease back at Kennedy and Richmond specifically for these modernization projects. We're going to be able to make the dollar go forward, that further, that opportunity that comes with them working together. Builds in these kinds of checks early on, so that we don't face them in the field later on.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Thank you, Teacher Payne. Trustee Phillips, you have three questions. Go ahead. Trustee Phillips, you have three questions. Go ahead.
Is it accurate that the architect and the contractor also work side by side from the beginning in design-build?
So similar. The original architect in design-build works directly for the district and does the bridging documents. And then we go out to bid and we award a design-build entity. So it's a singular entity. And in all of our deliver, or design-build projects that we've done, our contract with the design-build entity was with the contractor. So the architect was a subcontractor to the contractor, who is the design-build entity for design-build. But yes, they do work together because they are one entity or a subcontractor relationship.
Are we also part of the bidding process in design-build?
Yes, we are.
During the lease portion of lease-leaseback? So not the leaseback portion, but the lease portion, the beginning portion? What is the district's? What access does the district have to the site? And just for context, like we've had schools where there's been construction going on, like Lake, right? So there's school still happening. So in a lease-leaseback situation during the lease portion to them, what is our access? Our legal access to the entirety of the site?
So their lease rights, the lease-leaseback rights are as a builder only. It is still the district's property. And so the lease is for them as a builder. And so there may be some segregation of spaces like at Lake for safety and security purposes, which we would have on any type of construction project. But it is always the district's property.
Can I add to that, Melissa?
So that's a different issue, right? I'm specifically asking, for example, could, and I'm not asking would, could the entity say, "You've leased this to us" and limit our access to it?
Melissa, if you'd like, I'll, if, if I can, Trustee Phillips. The short answer is no, but let me kind of explain why. We don't lease them the whole site. We are actually very specific on the spaces we're leasing to the contractor. In fact, the agreement will point out, here's the entire site. We are leasing you this area to do your work. We'll probably designate the lay-down area, and that's not part of what they get in the lease. Only the areas they're touching is the lease. And the provisions in the lease allow you access, just like any other construction project. Although any other construction project, we in essence hand over control of the construction site, obviously, to the contractor. But in no way does the district have limitations in not being able to go on-site. You need boots and a hard hat and everything else and access. None of that changes under a lease-leaseback to how you are managing your projects under a design-bid build.
Trustee Phillips, that's three. Are there any other questions? Any other questions from a trustee who has not went? Trustee, I'm sorry, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Go ahead.
Thank you. I guess my question would be, why is it that we did not use lease-leaseback with Lake Elementary School?
It's a great question. We had some hesitancy to look at lease-leaseback because there have been some ongoing cases. While those cases were tied to an older case specifically, we really are conservative in our approach. And we didn't know if there would be new case law. And so I think somewhat broadly as an industry throughout California, some school districts that were doing lease-leaseback for years, there was almost a cooling. Let's wait and see if case law changes it in any way. And now that that Supreme Court decision, which again focused specifically on the previous case, but we have the, the statute, we have the case law. And so you could argue, now that it's been tested in the courts, we feel more confident bringing it forward because we feel like it's a more solid foundation to move forward. And also seeing that there has, there haven't been any other cases brought forward to challenge lease-leaseback, going back to that new statute. And so in full transparency, it wasn't really on the table for us at the time because we wanted to, to let it run its course.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's it, President Smith. Well, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Board, we did our three questions. Are there? Trustee Christian, did you have any questions? Trustee Palkar, did you have any questions? Ms. Payne, I did have a question. If we don't pay, but we have the 5% that we're reserving to be able to pay. So that means we would really never miss a payment. But if we did miss a payment, I believe Mr. Henderson said, we still, it's not gonna go into foreclosure, for lack of a better word. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. My second question. And Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy hit on it, but I just wanna ask it again. The reason we have not used this before is because you were trying to be as careful as possible to make sure that it was the least amount of risk to the district. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. I think those are all my questions. I'll reserve for comments. Board, is there a motion to, uh-uh, I remember my third question, sorry. My third question. I counted at least three times that this would come back to the board. Is that accurate? During this process, and we can stop anywhere during the process? Is that accurate?
Minimum of three, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm complete with questions. Board, is there a motion?
President Smith also make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2324-71, authorize the lease-leaseback delivery method and adopt procedures and criteria for evaluating qualifications and proposals of contractors for the Kennedy High School Modernization Project and the Richmond High School Modernization Project.
Is there a second? Thank you very much. We are now going to comments. If we could have one minute on the clock, please. Three questions. Two-minute comments. Is that, I'm sorry. Can we have two minutes, staff? I'm so sorry. We're gonna go around this way. We're gonna go with Trustee Phillips. Go ahead, sir.
I was gonna ask if we could have another round of questions.
Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to have another round of questions on this one, simply because, one, we wanna leave in a timely manner. We want, it's everybody's responsibility to make sure that we complete all the work of the board. Two, there was opportunity for the board to deliver their questions to the staff during our proposed time, which I believe is like on a Sunday night, we're supposed to turn in our questions. And three, people had opportunity to ask questions during their one-on-one, which I wanted to make sure that we had opportunity to ask our top three questions. But to the credit of Facilities Department, this is going to come back many, many times if we continue with the process. So we will have more time to ask questions. We are moving to public, no, we are moving to board comments. Does anyone have a comment? Mr. Phillips, you have a comment, sir?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I first wanna start by saying that I did attend the pre-meeting session with the superintendent and the staff. And I did ask questions during that, so I did take advantage of it. But this is, in my opinion, a big deal. And I think personally, it's okay to ask more than three questions for, what I consider anyway, to be a big, to be a big deal. And I do understand that this is going to come back to the board. But I've been on this board for a while and different iterations of this board. And inertia is real. Maybe I'm not using the term right. I'm a little sleepy, but our momentum is real. In the sense that when this board, our boards begin to go down a track, I have not seen a whole lot of flexibility. So the idea that it coming back, I'm not sure that that matters once the project begins and it begins to pick up momentum. So that's another reason I'd like us to have a more robust discussion now. That said, it took me a moment, and I shared this with the superintendent and staff, to get on board with the design-build process because I was stuck in the initial or original process that we followed. In our one-on-one and tonight, to be frank, I have not really heard anything that says that this is better than design-build. They sound the same, so I'm comfortable staying with the delivery method we've been using recently.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
I think this is a large, or could be a large change in procedure. I don't really know if it's good or bad, better or worse. But I think it's important that we ask questions together and not be isolated. And my final question that I do want all board members to hear and to understand is, if we get into trouble, what are the termination clauses on this versus any other building method that we might use? And you can choose to answer that or not.
Any other comments? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I wanna thank Ms. Payne. You did a really great job explaining a lot of terms that I had no idea how you were going to explain. So you did great. I learned quite, quite a bit. I did quite a bit of research for this conversation because I am an amateur when it comes to these issues, so I appreciate the way that you explained it. I agree this is actually a big change, but I did hear some positive things that could come out of the process. And when it comes back, I would appreciate if Ms. Payne, your department, could point out specifically the positives that you're seeing in this method. And/or you're transparent of like, you know what, like, this is maybe not working, this isn't working. And ultimately, you know, board, it's up to you whether or not you wanna continue or not. But I, I, I would appreciate that transparency. Although it sounds like the lease-lease method is actually a little more transparent. So that's, that's actually a, a really good thing for me. I would appreciate if you wouldn't mind sending the answer that Trustee Reckler asked to the full board. I would love to hear that answer at a later date. Because I'm an amateur, I did request prior to tonight an additional conversation with Dr. Hurst about this issue. And he explained it further. One of the things I'm hearing complaints from the community is that our board meetings are back to going too long. So we have to balance that, of course, with these big items. But we are back at extending our meetings. So it is up to us to get those questions answered. And if we want something for the rest of the board to hear, I think we should send it to the board president and the superintendent to forward to the full board so that the full board can hear and know that, that information. So that's it. And thank you so much to you and your department.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Ms. Payne, thank you so much for your presentation. It was very well done. Thank you for the opportunity to look at a new way of doing something. And then thank you for your commitment to bringing it back to the board at these different iterations with a minimum of three times. Board, if you have other questions for the Facilities Department? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy just went through the process. The process is you can submit those to the superintendent. He can then have those answered. And then they can be brought and given to the entire board for the answers. So the answer can be shared with the entire board. Board, once again, it is everyone's responsibility to make sure that you go to your one-on-ones. When you ask your questions in your one-on-ones, bring the three most important ones back for the community. There are also other opportunities to share your comments, questions and concerns with the board as a whole, as we sit together and we talk about these issues. Again, having things come back is another way of doing that. Having places where we can course correct is another way of doing that. Even if this board or the school board typically has not done that, it doesn't mean that it can't be done. So I appreciate the fact that we are all committed to course correcting if we see that there's something that needs to change. I'm also excited that the board is committing to trying to stay on time so we can value our staff and value the community and value ourselves. So having these questions answered, going to your one-on-ones, doing your independent research all helps with moving the agenda forward and tackling these big issues. So again, Ms. Payne, thank you, and I look forward to it coming back. Dr. Hurst, thank you for collecting the questions and getting the answers to the entire board. I am complete. We are now moving, we are moving on to a we are moving on to the vote. We are voting for Resolution Number 2324-71. Trustee Palkar, do you have a vote, ma'am?
I abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
I abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you. We are now moving on to action item E2, further amend the architectural contract for Kennedy High School Modernization Project. Ms. Payne, this is your item?
Yes, thank you. So tonight, before the board, we are bringing the Second Amendment to the architectural contract for the modernization project. And so we have gone through an extensive negotiation with the selected architect. The original contract was for that initial planning and kind of pre-design work. We came back to the board with the First Amendment, which was partial schematic designs. We didn't wanna lose the momentum of the project. We wanted the architect to continue to work, but we needed to negotiate the architectural contract that's going to take us from today all the way to project completion. And so we use the Office of Public School Construction Architectural Sliding Scale to negotiate these contracts. And so what the OPSC, Office of Public School Construction Sliding Scale, does is it has a new construction sliding scale and it has a modernization sliding scale. Because part of what it understands is that you're building something brand-new versus if you're modernizing something that's existing. And so I have my note here, but I can't seem to find it. I think the modernization scale starts at 12%, and the new construction scale starts at nine. And then as the construction value increases incrementally, that percent goes down. And so we negotiated both the architect contracts for Kennedy and for Richmond in the same manner. There are some additional specialty consultants that we believe are in addition to that sliding scale. For example, food service design, theatrical design, some additional electrical components, just because low voltage, communication, all of that has gotten much more complex, as well as some sustainability. So there's a lot of green things that are in our buildings these days. um, as well as some sustainability. So there's a lot of green things that are in our buildings these days. And so there's a couple of other specialty consultants. But the amendment before you tonight, um, identifies the cost, not only for the architect, but for all of their engineers to complete the project in total, based on the hundred and eighty-five million dollar construction costs. And so we recommend the board approve this amendment tonight.
Thank you so very much for your presentation. Staff, are there public comments?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, we're now moving to questions. There will be three questions and two-minute comments. Any questions? Trustee Phillips, you have questions?
Yes. So just to be clear, the contract that we're looking at, actually the contracts for two and three, so I don't ask it again, the same question. Those contracts are based on the delivery method that we just, the board just voted on?
These were the OPSC sliding scale doesn't take into effect delivery method. Um, so these were, um, delivery method wasn't a component of the, uh, architectural negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move E two, further amend the architectural contract for Kennedy High School Modernization Project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, we are going to comments. We have two minutes on the clock, please. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Pau Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving on to E three, further amend the architectural contract for Richmond High School, RHS Modernization Project. Ms. Payne, this is your item.
Our report for this item is the same. We treated both the Kennedy High School and Richmond Modernization negotiations the same, and so staff recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you very much, staff. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any questions? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I, I don't have a question. I was going to make a motion.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none. Trustee Phillips, your motion, sir?
I move item E three, further amend the architectural contract for Richmond High School Modernization Project.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, do you have any comments? Yes, okay. Trustee Phillips, go ahead. Two minutes on the clock.
Although I did not hear the upside of doing the lease lease back in comparison to the design build uh, that we've started using. I do hope that we are able, um, to make the money that we do have, go farther. Um, if we are to go through with the lease, lease back. So that is my only comment, um, because I said that's my only comment and started commenting again, uh, because it is important and the projects do need to get done.
Sorry. Thank you so much, trustee Phillips. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Pau Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee, sorry, excuse me. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. There are no discussion items, so we are moving straight to our consent items. We are looking at the first consent item, C six. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this for discussion. Go ahead.
I did. Just very briefly, we have many contracts in here that are from months past. May I understand, um, the reason? And is there any path forward to bringing timely contracts to the board, preferably before they're approved? Thank you.
Yes, we know we have CBO Moses on, and I think she can answer that question. I know we were speaking about it also, um, in our agenda setting or agenda review with trustee Phillips, and that is ongoing work, um, in making sure that we get them to the board prior to, um, actually starting the work. But Ms. Moses, are you able to come on?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, board. Uh, thank you for the question, trustee Reckler. Good evening, Dr. Hurst. I apologize for having camera off. I'm joining you from North Carolina, and it's quite late out here this evening. But I did want to stay on to answer your question. Um, we do understand that some of our sites and some of our departments are moving through this contracts department very slow, um, contracts process very slowly, um, and they are starting work without approval. We are contacting each department lead and administrator, uh, and having one-on-one meetings to discuss the issues as they're coming up. There are different issues for different contracts. Some of it is a retraining that needs to be, um, be held for administrators and understanding what does need board approval and what might not need board approval. It is something we've been working on for the last few months. We're continuing to work diligently on it. And also we're observing our, um, protocols and structures to see what we can also tweak as the department to improve, uh, the rate of these contracts coming forward and the work not beginning before your approval. Um, so if you had a question in particular about a specific contract, I could look in the notes and tell you exactly where the holdup was. However, again, as I've reiterated before, business services is not approving any, any purchase orders for any contracts that are not board-approved. Um, and so in terms of our processes, we are not moving forward, even though sites may be. However, we are trying to rectify the site issue and the department issue as well. And we truly understand and, and take your concern seriously because it's a concern of ours as well.
Okay, thank you very much for the explanation. That's all I have.
Thank you. Would anyone like to move consent item C six?
I'll move consent item C six, all contracts attached.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Oh, you're, okay. I didn't see your little mic on. Okay, so you're second. Um, board, we're going to go to comments. Are there any comments? Trustee Phillips, you have a comment?
I do. Um, we actually had a, a really, I think it was a really good conversation, um, last night about, um, this issue in particular, because it's an issue that has literally gone on for years. And so, um, I wasn't speaking for the board in the conversation, but I was talking about my experience as a board member. And so I thought that it was a healthy exchange in the sense of staff saying, you know, this is how we feel, you know. And I'm talking about like downtown staff, not necessarily like people at the sites, right? But like, this is how we feel when, you know, a contract gets up to the board, um, and it's rejected. And then, um, or a fundraiser, you know, either way, right? And it's rejected, and this is how we feel, because then we have to go and do all of this work on the backend, you know? And I shared, you know, as a board member, you know, we don't have a lot of, we're not really responsible for the day-to-day operations of what's happening, right? And but we are responsible for, you know, fiscal oversight of the district. And we can't do our fiscal responsibilities, right? If the contracts and the monies are being spent before it even makes it to us. So I, I thought that it was a, a good exchange, and I thought that staff, again, I wasn't speaking for the board. I was speaking as a trustee who's been in this situation for a while now. And that it could be frustrating, right? And then sometimes, you know, you're ultimately, your only response at the end of the day is just be like, well, no, right? And board members are people, um, and so that can happen. And so I just want to say, I, I do think we had a good conversation. I do think that our staff currently is trying to address the issue, but I do think it is a longstanding issue, so it is not going to change overnight. But I do think that at least through me and possibly others, they heard and understood the concern from a board level.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? No, we're going to move straight to the vote. We are voting for C six to be approved. Trustee Pau Carr?
Abstain.
Thank you, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Thank you, trustee, trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We're now moving on to consent item C eleven. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you very much. So I want to understand, uh, that this is an addition of a position to the central office.
Good evening, good evening, board. Thank you, trustee Reckler, for the question. This position current, we actually have someone in this position currently. It was a former tech position whose responsibilities were really more in alignment with the admin administrative position. This position was actually, um, approved previously between SSA and a previous director. And through the transition of the position, it had not been brought to the board. So I'm here to bring it to the board for approval today. Someone is, is doing this work as we speak.
Okay, so it's a filled spot. It's just a different, the job has transitioned.
Correct. It's more in alignment with the work that she has been doing for a while now.
Okay, that's all I have, and I'll move the item. If nobody else has anything on it.
You're going to move the item?
I'll second.
Thank you. So trustee Reckler moved the item, uh, C eleven, new job description. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy did second. We are now moving to no, no more questions. We have a motion. We are now moving to comments. Any comments? Seeing none, we're now moving to the vote. Trustee Pau Carr, your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote? Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much, board. We have contin, we have finished the work at nine fifty-three. We are moving on to comments from the Board of Education. We'll do two-minute comments from board members that would like to make a comment. Do we have anyone that would like to make a comment? Trustee Phillips?
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I have a list of things that I want to talk about briefly. I'm going to start with, uh, free lunch forums. Um, people brought that up earlier, um, regarding Fairmont, um, and those forums being in English and Spanish. Um, and to the extent that we do have other languages, um, I understand we can't put the forums in literally every language. But to the extent that we do have, um, significant languages spoken or a significant number of languages spoken in the district, um, I think we need to start putting those forums, um, in additional languages besides English and Spanish. Because the guy who brought that up made a good point, um, about how that could, in addition to, right, um, lunch being given out without forms, um, how that could affect, um, the percentage of, um, of students, uh, that turn the forums in. Um, the other thing that I want to do is I want to talk about Vista again, um, very briefly. Um, I do think that we need to have a discussion about the school. I also think that there needs to be a conversation with parents and guardians about why their children are attending those schools. Um, that because for many kids, like my daughter, um, it's, it's necessary. Uh, she started going there because she was being bullied. Um, and now she's going in the ninth grade. She's going to be twelve when she starts. So finding out what those stories are, uh, are very important in our decision-making process. Because the truth is, in addition, right? Like, they have virtual charter schools like K-12. So if this gets shut down, people are just going to go. And then there's somewhere for them to go. So we should think about it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So first, I want to thank the superintendent for the superintendent's report. It was a superintendent's report. Thank you. That was great. I also want to thank Ms. Payne for your work. Believe me, my vote had nothing to do with your work, but simply that not all my questions were answered, and I thought it was important that they were questions that the entire board heard, not just a one-on-one or a conversation with one person. Um, also, we didn't take public comment on the resolutions, and I got a text message that people wanted to take comments, so, or wanted to make comments, so, um, maybe that could come back next week. We could have all the people call in that wanted to say something. Um, for future agenda items, I do want to recommend that we have a budget study sessions so that all the main points of the budget can be discussed when a budget comes during the first meeting of June and then needs to be approved at the last meeting in June. That is not sufficient time for the board's thoughts and sentiments to be, um, uh, thought about and for the community to understand what's going on in there and their, what I think are significant reductions. And, um, I think that, uh, it's important that that is, uh, those are discussed with transparency. Um, the last thing is that, uh, I want to have a discussion on who does district investigations. Um, in my opinion, there's some substandard work that's going on. I could talk about my own investigation. People did not understand the Brown Act. Parliamentary procedure, conflict of interest law, and something recently else came up, and I was very disturbed at the quality of the work. And I think that, uh, there are other firms out there that do this work. And I think that we should be thinking about people who can do better work. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, for the presentation this evening, um, you know, concerning the rebuild of, uh, other schools. And so, um, and I just wanted to say I attended the, uh, presentation at Kennedy and Richmond High on last week. And so, um, and they gave a update on everything that was about to take place for the rebuild of the schools. And then also, I want to see on a future agenda item, um, uh, teacher workforce housing placed on a, uh, agenda item. And then also, um, the Swahili School also to be on a future agenda item. And so those are some of the things I would like to see happen. And then I just, you know, basically say, you know, to everyone, as we close out the, uh, end of the school year, I mean, we getting close, graduations and so forth, and, and I know everybody's tired, you know, worked hard throughout the whole school year. And, um, I just want to tell everybody, keep up the good work and, 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 um, and we almost at the end. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I first wanted to also acknowledge the Highland issue. Uh, I'm glad that we are being proactive, um, on the issues being brought up by community. Um, so I look forward to hearing about the report that comes from that, from our facilities team. Um, also, I would love to get more information about Fairmont and that funding, um, and how we could support them to get that funding back if we can. Um, and then especially if, if the, if the difference is that small, right? Like, what could we do? Um, I agree with trustee Phillips about Vista. I think it's an incredible program that we should continue to expand. Um, and I know that we have competing issues with our budget, right? So if we have really low enrollment and staring gray levels and we're collapsing, I think that we need to be a little more transparent on that. Uh, because I think that, that there's some misunderstanding that the board is closing a program that I don't think majority of us would ever think it's a good idea to close, right? But then the idea of collapsing, which happens in every school, whenever there's low enrollment in a classroom, that's normal, right? So I think that has to be explained better. Um, what I'm hearing is that there's a lack of explanation of that. It's my understanding is that the principal has been participating on that, the school has participated on that. So why is it that we're hearing something different from parents, right? So I think that something has to go out to explain that a little bit further. Um, I also want to appreciate the four of the board members to my left with Um, I also want to appreciate the four of the board members to my left who attended their one-on-ones. Um, it is critical for us to do this work. The reason why our board meetings are going longer um and many of us have had to leave early is because we are increasing our number of questions that we're asking in public. It's important to be transparent, but it's also important for us to do our pre-work uh and not do God check questions. Um, so I'm gonna start calling it out because I think it's making our work harder, it's making staffs work harder, um, and it's making us less effective. Um, so I want to appreciate trustee Phillips, trustee Christian, President Smith Foles uh for attending their one-on-ones and asking their questions ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board. Thank you for a concise meeting tonight. Thank you for everyone um in the public who came out with public comment. This board has increased public comment maybe two or three times over from clerk Gonzalez Hoy, when he was then president of the school board. He increased public comment to us increasing public comment further by making sure that we have our packs that come in. So to the public, you have opportunities to come and speak to the board either via Zoom or in public at Dejounte Middle School or on the telephone. So those comments can come at the beginning of our board meetings at open session. They can also come right before we go into closed session. We did not have closed session today, but typically we do. Also, you are able to speak to the board after every staff presentation. That includes action items and discussion items. You also have access to your board through emails and through phone calls. The board's job and obligation is to bring your questions, comments and concerns back to the whole board so we can have those conversations. And that's built into how we run our meetings and how we are um interacting as a board. So again, board, please uh attend your one-on-ones. Thank you to the staff who make those one, that time available to answer the questions. Board, we also agreed that we would send questions in ahead of time to staff. So then they would incorporate those questions and the answers into their presentations. That's another way that we are making sure that all the information is getting out to the community. So if we follow these steps, protocols and procedures, we will not only have a more efficient meeting, we will also be very transparent with our community and also allow the staff's, the staff's time not to be devalued and misused. Dr. Hurst, thank you so much for your leadership. Welcome back. We are glad to have you back with us. Board, we only have in community, less than thirty days left in school. If you do not count the weekends, it may hover around twenty-three days left. So thank you for all that you do. We are going to adjourn this meeting at ten oh three. The next scheduled regular board meeting is on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at Levania Dejounte Middle School. We are adjourned at ten oh three. Thank you. Kennedy says, I'm gonna break this little thing. This little gavel gonna be.